Pretty much, which is what the community has been asking for some time. And it's a way of doing it for very little investment in the meantime. So I'm very supportive of this going forward.
Yeah, I know you're spooking, but just to, I mean, you touched on your self-vary worship. The councillor Thompson and Tavish and Lord mentioned the eight million dollars and you did yourself. That eight million dollars has been sitting in the budget for a long time. And it's a bit misleading, yeah. I don't think it could be, I wouldn't be happy spending eight million dollars. I don't think it's, I'm hoping there won't be anywhere near the eight million dollars. And that's what seems to be influencing some of the speakers. Because the report will come back for the next year and there'll be some figures around it. I mean, it might be eight, it might be nine, it might be two. I don't know what it is, but it's not necessarily eight million dollars.
Councillor Staines, would you like to exercise your role in the plan?
Yes, I would. In putting forward these resolutions, I think they take us forwards. And I accept, having been on council for the last two triennium, that we have pushed out and pushed out a South Dunedin facility. In some ways, while that hasn't been good for the community, I think the original proposal was for a straight library. And that's what would have been built had we built it then. So that's not an excuse, but I think there is a benefit out of this. At the moment, we have budget in the 17, 18 year. So this doesn't delay when we have the budget set at our LTP. But I think what it does is it, the option provides South Dunedin with this opportunity in a shopfront location. If we're really clever about it, I'm sure we'll find organisations that want to be part of this short, this, well, temporary facility, if you like. People like the Polytechnic may wish to bring their training there. As Mia Callan mentioned, it became uneconomic for the Polytechnic to continue to lease a building there, given that government funding for this form of training had disappeared. But the Polytechnic does have quite a strong social conscience. And I wouldn't mind betting that they would seriously consider delivering some courses if there was an opportunity to do it without the cost of the building. Secondly, they used to have cafe across the road. And they do have students who train as baristas. You never know, they may decide to put in a small facility with coffees there. The students might gain experience in it. The digital office has tremendous demand on for training, along with computers in homes and their programmes stepping up. All of these organisations currently operate, but all struggle to a degree to have somewhere to set up. And what better place than South Dunedin, where we have a high number of people in the community who could benefit from these sorts of services. So I don't see this as a stalling tactic. I don't see this as an unnecessary step. What I see it doing is giving us the opportunity to provide a service to the community and then measure firstly, which community organisations wish to be part of, how successful that is, what size it needs to be. And that will help inform us to a much greater degree as we look at something permanent. Secondly, by doing this in a shopfront location and starting to work on a heritage reuse solution rather than a brand new building, we may well find, as has been mentioned, that the cost is indeed, that it might be two or three million. And that may cause us in our long-term plan to bring that expenditure forwards. So in fact, it gives us the confidence to move earlier. So my view is, let's get on with it. Let's see who will come in and support the trial, who will take part. That, if we can do that quickly, that will give us some idea of maybe which of the vacant shopfronts in South Dunedin we might want to give it, to speak to the owner of. And then hopefully out of this comes a really great facility that actually meets the needs. And who knows, during the trial period, we may be able to test what has always been suggested by South Dunedin retailers. And that is that if there was a library or community centre complex in South Dunedin, it would lift the economic benefit accrued to the retail organisations and perhaps therefore assist with the regeneration of South Dunedin. So I urge you all to vote for these resolutions and let's get on with it.
Okay, councillors, I'm going to put it. The resolutions are on the wall. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carry on. Okay, we'll resume. And we're now on to section eight of Dunedin Public Libraries RFID project. On pages 12, on pages 12.75, or on page 12.75 actually, as from memory, it's only one page. Question, councillors, any questions, Bernie, on this one?
Through the chair, I can just give you a very quick update. We have started tagging items. We're about a third of the way through the tagging process. And we're working at the city library at the moment. And we do think we'll have most of the tagging done by end of February. So the project is proceeding well. And we expect to have a go live in early May. And at that time, you know, once we have the equipment in place, hopefully be able to create an opportunity for council to come and have a look at it working. The one component of the system which will not be available by the end of June however, is the component in the sorter solution. Two of the three parts of the solution will be available, but one part will be available after June. But we expect that to be in by September at the latest. And that is the automated sorting solution at the city library.
Thanks, Bernie. Are there any other questions on that? Councillor Banks?
I was just wondering, Bernie, is this anything like the system that they've been using at a taga museum? They kind of pioneered a radio system there as well? And if so, have you been able to sort of learn from their experience in instituting a new system like this?
Through the chair, it is similar to what the Taga Museum's been using in that it's radio frequency technology. But we've mostly been trying to gather knowledge and experience from other libraries where it's been implemented. Taga Museum's sort of purpose has been slightly different to ours. Whereas we have a high level of transactions in terms of borrowing and we need to record all of that information, that isn't applicable for the museum. They're trying to just sort of track location of items and build an itinerary of, like a sort of a database of all of their collection holdings.
And the other libraries that you've been talking about in advance of this, they've had the system for a while, have they all?
Yes, there's a number of libraries in New Zealand already using the system. Crossstirred City Libraries in fact has the identical system to us. They have the same vendor.
Satellite ones as well, and the satellite libraries as well?
Yes, yes, that's correct. And there's a number of different vendors, but essentially it's the same technology. And so there's a lot of experience in New Zealand already and worldwide. So we're reasonably confident that it will deliver the benefits that are proposed.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay. I think that's probably it, Bernie. Thank you. The next line is Dunedin Public Gallery, which is 8.11. There's no, this isn't a report, this is just the budget line. Welcome, Cam. Any questions, points on this line? Now that we have a candidate.
Councillor Tavish. Just wondering what the increases in operational expenditure relate to? An increase in the number of exhibitions or just electricity costs or is it?
I think it's fair to say that it's more around that place. You know, our cost has gone up across the board. We have tagged a little bit more money to our exhibition outputs. And I think that's, I guess, a response to a number of years when we really dived back. And, you know, we've got to the point where we need to try and, within reason, with the means of it.
Councillor Thompson.
I have a question which is almost impossible for you to answer, both operationally and politically, but I'll ask it anyway. The biggest issue that strikes me for you guys is the ability to add to your collection and our inability to fund you in any meaningful way to do so. And the vexed issue of an admission charge has come up time and time again. But I wonder if an admission charge was a dollar, do you think it would seriously impact on visitor attendance? And if you were able to keep 100% of that dollar and put it towards collections, which could give you between maybe 150 and 200,000 dollars a year, would you see that as being an option that you might wish to proceed with?
Well, I think as you're aware, within the council, we are doing a report, comprehensive feasibility study on the likely impacts of implementing a charge. And that's not ready for this series of meetings.
Well, nice, nice scape. The nature of that report is, as I understand it, more around the notion of a visit and our local versus outside. And what I'm really asking you is about is something a little bit different. If you are, the argument has always been, and I have sympathy with the argument, that if you're going to charge 10 dollars or 15 or 20 or whatever it might be for people to come into your facility, people, it will substantially reduce patronage. And the argument has always been around offsetting the cost of running the facility. I'm really asking you about something a little different. I'm saying if the fee was so nominal as to not actually be a factor, such as a dollar made, and you were able to keep that dollar as 100% additional revenue and put it towards collections or exhibitions that might attract even more people and add further to your revenue, do you think that would act as a disincentive to people in any significant way? And would that kind of additional revenue of no cost to ratepayers be, make a meaningful difference to your ability to build your collection?
That is a difficult question to answer. I can only really look at the historical experience of, say, City Gallery in Wellington, who had a really nominal fee in the 90s, which they dropped because it wasn't adding meaningfully to their revenue lines. But any revenue, additional revenue that we can get, we can tag towards collections as a, would be a welcome, you know, increase to our capacity to do our jobs and to build those collections.
Councillor Hawkins.
Firstly, I don't know if I necessarily agree with councillor Thompson's assertion that it would be at no cost to the ratepayer. Any enforced admission charge would have to be funded through increased operational budgets, I'm assuming, to have the staff to do that. And on that line, the decreased budget for visitor hosts to the gallery from this, from the 13, 14 budget to the 14, 15 budget, does one of the functions that they serve for the gallery is a security function. I wonder whether, at what point does reducing that budget compromise us in terms of the security of the collection as it is being exhibited?
That decrease is due to the gallery, I think, being a little bit more efficient in its provision of front of house services. So at the moment, I can say that we have no, we have no additional risk to the collection. We have four or five staff who are out in the gallery at any one time. We did last year and we will next year.
And secondly, the provision for replacement of the lift, I am aware that Venue Hire is a revenue stream for the gallery. And I'm aware that organisations have hired the gallery under the assumption that they would be able to use that lift to move equipment, like PA systems and what have you, up and down using that lift. And then the lift broke and they were no longer able to do that. Does that, is there potential for not replacing that lift sooner to impact on your ability to generate income through Venue Hire?
Yeah, I think the wording's a little misleading. What we need to do with the lift is to replace a couple of parts. And we're well aware that we had some problems about 12 months ago where something was faulty with the lift. And it took our maintenance people a long time to actually ascertain what the problem was. The lift is now something like 17 years old. And it's probably got another 10 years in it, as long as we maintain it properly and keep the parts going. So the 400,000 dollars which has been tagged off of the capital budgets is for a couple of hydraulic components. And that should give us another five, 10 years of life on the lift.
Are you comfortable that it's okay until then?
Absolutely, that's the advice that we've been given.
Councillor Wilson.
Thanks, Cam. You've had a substantial number more through than your target. Has it come at a higher capital cost than anticipated?
High number of visitors or?
Yeah, visitors.
No, no, not really. We're geared up to, we're geared up to provide for 200,000 people per annum. And, you know, any increases on that mean that we use more consumables. We're probably doing more cleaning, that type of thing. But the impact on the budget is not substantial.
And just going to councillor Thompson's question, just wondering, and I know that Taga Museum does it. Do you have a donations box? I can't hear.
Yeah, we do. And I think, you know, to date it hasn't been that successful. I think we can, I think we can look at ways that we give it a little bit more prominence. And perhaps tell people what their donation might go towards. You know, if you deposit a dollar here, it will allow us to do, you know, X, Y, Z. You know, provide more services, provide better exhibitions, buy more collections. I think that's the challenge that we haven't really met properly in the past.
No, I wasn't here yesterday unfortunately, but I understand it's going to be a review of the KPIs and including the number of visitors. But just understanding, in the art galleries case, does that include going into Nova? Because as contrast to things like the Taga Museum, no, it doesn't.
No, it doesn't. So that's the door counter on the front door.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Councillor Wally.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just reviewing exhibitions, I see we're looking at revenue increasing by 45,000, yet an expenditure output's been looking at an increase up by 138,000.
I guess the point I was trying to make before was that, you know, you've got one year of data to look in, previous data. I think if you had a snapshot of the last decade, you'd see that the expenditure on exhibitions has been fairly static. And we've signaled a desire to try and, you know, replace a lot of the equipment that we use, meet, I guess, the expectations of our visitors by investing a little bit more. Now, the increase in revenue reflects the actual performance that we've achieved over the last little while. We've been, we've been very successful at attracting grant revenue. And so that additional, that additional income is really a, just a realistic view of what we've been able to achieve in the past. And we wanted to signal that to you as how we can actually perform.
Do you have any exhibitions you're targeting to bring to the art gallery in the next 12 months?
Yeah, we work out our exhibition plan 18 months, two years in advance. So we've got a, we've got an exhibition programme that we can, that we can stage, you know, for the budget that we've asked.
Any outstanding ones you're going to make?
Yes, I was thinking, I was here to talk about money.
That's okay.
Look, we've, yeah, we've got, I mean, at the moment, we've got an outstanding programme, I think. It represents a broad range of international and local, you know, best practice within the arts. And over the December period, I think we had almost 30,000 people through the door. So that's really had a target, had a chord with the visiting public. And it's the kind of programme that I'm passionate about as a director. So all I can say to you is it's more of a sound, more really engaging, thoughtful, interactive and lively programming.
Awesome. Thank you.
Councillor Thompson.
The other question I was wanting to ask was around the retail side of the operation. Your gross margin strikes me as being really low. And I don't know whether that's because it's maybe heavily influenced by box sales. But I wonder is that if you are benchmarking your markups and margins against industry sector, there wouldn't be hellishly many operators that could survive on a 30% gross margin?
No.
And I just wonder whether that is an opportunity that is perhaps not being maybe exploited quite as well as it could be now?
Yeah, it's a difficult one. It is, it's an alarmingly low margin that we actually take. It's, you know, you wouldn't stand business if you, if you did that. I guess the, you know, the reasons for having a gift shop in an art gallery are wide, not least to provide a destination. It's another reason that people come through the door. When you're trying to broaden your audience, it's important, I think, to give people who otherwise wouldn't go to an art gallery the opportunity to go through the door, to be exposed, you know, in the foyer to art experiences and find themselves in our parts of the gallery. I think, getting back to your point, some of our overheads are probably overheads that we would have anyway. You know, you're talking about being in business and so we don't pay any labour costs, any additional labour costs. You know, our electricity bill and things like that, we don't pay, you know, our rental as the same. What we've tried to do is find a niche. And maybe that's not the most commercially successful niche. But we're also mindful that we are, we're operating in a market where there are business people, you know, who are, you know, making a living around us. And we are, I guess, so we're not attacking this, you know, with a ruthless commercial kind of attitude. We are, you know, we'll get high-ticket items that might sit on the shelf, you know, for six, 12 months. And if you were, if you were operating a business yourself, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have stopped those sorts of items. But we're trying to, we're trying to operate in a, in a kind of a context where we are, you know, not trying to take away business from other retailers, you know.
Can I suggest as another retailer, that in fact you should be a little bit less of a shrinking violet in that regard? And I think that it's, I think, you know, if you're going to run a retail operation, you should try to run it and make a profit out of it and use that to assist your purposes. And I don't think you should be too bothered about whether you're competing with somebody else in that regard. I can probably say that with less than others around the table. But I just, I don't actually think that you make that much difference in that regard. You do have a niche. And I just think you should have a look at this and see whether you're maximising what you could get out of it.
We're taking it. Councillor Pegg.
Thank you, Cam, for maintaining the reputation of the art gallery. Just wondering, in the area of private support, where you're going with sponsorship and that line, you know, grants, pretty static, it's 53,000, I think it is. Is that something that you work at or is it just sort of a kind of an opportunity that you take at times to build the sponsorship? And I'm thinking also of new works that you might be able to produce and where they're subject to sponsorship as well.
Yes, sponsorship has been, has been something that the gallery has struggled with for years now. You know, the days where we could attract, you know, large corporate support for the programmes, you know, it's been, it's been harder. And I think it's a result of the, you know, the economic climate that we're in and the, you know, the competing, you know, competition that, you know, the other cultural institutions and cultural providers around town, you know, a lot of them find. So that has been a challenge. And, but look, I mean, maximising every, you know, aspect of our revenue is a challenge that we have. You know, we are, you know, when we provide, when we produce these budgets every year, you know, we're looking at how we can trim the costs as much as we can and still provide services to the community. But how we can, how we can increase, you know, revenue in every way that we can. It's easier said than done.
Any further questions?
Councillor Hawkins.
Just to clarify, the gallery spaces that are currently sponsored, just on that topic of sponsorship, there's no current revenue stream from those sponsorship arrangements, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Those sponsorships were sold in perpetuity at the time. So there is, there is unfortunately no opportunity to go back out to the market to resell those.
Okay, no further questions on that? Thank you, Cam. Appreciate it. Move on now to Toitoa Taga Setters Museum, that's pages 8.17. Welcome, Jennifer. So 8.17, councillors, any questions on those pages? No questions? Everyone's very happy with, and I think I can speak for everyone. Everyone is very happy with Toitoa, it's performing remarkably. And I think it's a credit to the whole of your staff and you.
Thank you very much.
Taga Museum Levy, 8.27. Anything on that?
Your Worship.
Something on that?
Just a question of the Taga Museum. Obviously, we don't have their budgets in front of us or anything like that. So we are taking you on your recommendation really, that this is a least of three move. I think the reason I question this one in particular is simply that we know that we can't reverse it. So I think every time we do need, we increase that. This levy, we need to be very sure that it is required, so.
So before the, before the final, so I guess this is an indicative move that we are, we understand the strategic work they have underway. We understand their commitment to transparency in terms of dealing with us around their staffing numbers, salaries, budgets, the way they're, the way they're funding or what they're funding. And we understand their commitment to work with us a lot more closely than they have in the past. Given that, we've given an indication, we're recommending that you agree in the draft budget to the 2% increase. However, prior to the final budget being signed off, we will have a budget for you, at which point you can at that point reverse it. So you can reverse it after that.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful for us. And I'm sure that they will proceed him. And we've seen, I mean, we see the annual reports and that sort of thing, but just not the full projections. Yeah, thank you.
Councillor No.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just a question for the chief executive. With regards to the contribution from our regional partners, there's no issue. I know it's a relatively modest amount compared with the city's contribution, but there's no issue there, that's all being lined up?
The partners are comfortable with the position.
All right, if that's all there is on that, then that concludes section eight, museums, libraries and art galleries, Your Worship.
Well, I would just, before we move on, I would like to test the water with a resolution around the art gallery. I sense that the water's deeper than my pipe, but.
Which was, were you testing the temperature or the depth?
That start includes the consideration. That staff include the consideration of a nominal targeted admission fee for collection additions in the Dunedin Public Art Gallery, including running this as a trial in the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen year show. Should I just get the staff included in what's the report we're doing?
With the report on charging for non-local visitors.
No, I'm actually...
We can add it to that same report, we can report back at the same time.
That's really all I'm asking. I mean...
Can I ask a question around that?
Well, can I ask, is there a seconded for that? This is a motion, so is there a seconded for the motion?
Well, I'm happy to second it in pro forma.
Okay, so you can ask a question.
Sorry, I was gonna ask a question. And the question is, I'm interested in why the art gallery and why not also Toito?
My reason for it and the reason that I concluded the notion of a trial is I think that the art gallery is actually more dependent for its future growth on acquisition of new collection as opposed to continually recycling old collection. It is, and it has made repeated requests in the time that I've been on council for a lift in its acquisitions budget, and we are unable to provide that. And the amount that it has for acquisitions is derisory when you look at what it costs you to buy any meaningful piece of art. Not that I find much art meaningful, but anyway, so and by doing it as a trial and at an extremely nominal amount, we would get a sense of whether or not this did affect, we would get a sense of whether it made any meaningful contribution. And by doing it as a targeted thing, we'd make it very clear that this is not to try and offset council costs, but is to actually facilitate the art gallery to grow its collection. And I also think, whenever I've been in there, there's usually been a staff member at that little booth at the foot of the stairs. Clearly, we don't want to charge people for being in the foyer, but it struck me that on a trial basis, you wouldn't have to increase staffing costs to have that person just collecting that dollar admission. And the other reason I'm interested in trying this trial is I personally don't think the visitor, non-visitor thing's going to be a go. I just think there's so many complications around it, but I, so those are all the reasons. It's an experiment, it's not a costly experiment. And if you do something as a trial and you find three months into it that staff are being assaulted by art patrons who previously got in there for nothing, well, you know, we can change it.
So it's been moved and settled, could you, councillor Thompson, I read it out again?
Yes, that staff include in the report being prepared on charging, they include consideration of a nominal targeted admission fee for collections additions in the Dunedin Public...
Hang on.
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry.
Maybe a gold coin and something more, maybe two dollars. Gold coins are actually... Some drop sovereign, that would really be in the money. Okay, I think we've got the, I'll get it read out again in a minute, but we've got the gist of it, so I'll invite speakers. Councillor Bezic.
Has it been seconded?
Yes, it's been seconded by councillor Hawke. Well, still seconded.
Was she confirming that seconding or not?
She may have got it.
Yeah, that's fine. Councillor Bezic.
Well, I was considering seconding councillor Thompson's motion before, but I wasn't as sure of the wording of it, but is this a report that will come back? Will this go into their draft annual plan?
So there is a report already coming back to follow up on this idea of charging for non-Dunedin, charging for residents who aren't already paying for this through the rates. This is an exploration between all of the major cultural facilities in town. It was something that councillor Lawes asked for this time last year. It's not ready for today because the research, we've been out and asked visitors what they thought of it and what seemed like a reasonable charge or not, couldn't really be done until just before Christmas, right in the heart of tourist season, in the cruise ship season time. So it's, a draft is nearly completed, it'll be coming to culture and community. I don't... That would make it something we could consult on, but we probably wouldn't have enough detail around budget changes, but we could certainly consult on the concept if you wish to.
Sorry, my question may have been put the right way, but will there be an opportunity for people to submit on it through your annual plan? Is it going to be in the draft annual plan or is this something that'll come after that?
Yes, so if it gets to a community appointment on the eleventh of February, which is what we're aiming for, then it will be able to be consulted on the idea of it through the draft annual plan.
I'm happy to support it on that basis.
Councillor Leng.
Councillor Thompson has said that this is an experiment, and fair enough, except that the experiment has been tried in other places, and in fact, we've just been told that the experiment was tried and discontinued up north. An extremely nominal fee or even a nominal fee means that you're going to have cash handling costs, ticketing and accounting costs. One dollar is still an issue for some and it would be inerrant for others. I don't think that the experiment needs to be done because it's been done elsewhere. I don't think that it's going to give you any net gain after you've got your accounting, cash handling and ticketing costs coming out of it. And therefore, I don't think we really need to try this experiment, it has been tried many times before and failed.
Councillor Wilson.
Well, I'll be voting against this because I think you'd have to cross the border, otherwise you're going to just move the market to somewhere else. But I do take on board what Cam said about increasing the awareness of the ability to give donations, and I think that's really where we have to go. I can't recall seeing the donation box there myself, I've been there a few times, so I'm, I think there's a huge opportunity there that we can, and I'm sure he feels empowered to do that, and I think that's what we should tackle first.
Councillor Staines.
I'm a little bit uncomfortable. I actually do think it would be nice to charge visitors. And so this one sort of slipped further the visitors. I still wonder whether there's an opportunity to be a little bit stronger in terms of, how would you put it, appealing to visitors to make a donation. So it's not a mandatory charge, but we're much stronger to put the donation box right in the middle of where they're going to walk and put something with it. Like, let's give it an incentive as councillors. Let's vote one dollar for every dollar that goes in that donation box. So in effect, you get a bonfire effect and it's for acquisitions. Now, just something that makes people at least think about, putting a dollar or two dollars, or if they're a visitor, they might drop a ten dollar note in, and that is going to acquisitions and they know that it'll actually have a, it'll be a gearing effect. And I don't think that exposes, well, that exposes to a hundred thousand dollars of expenditure, I'd be yelling from the rooftops about how fantastic that is, but I suspect it's not going to bring in huge amounts, but if it brought in twenty thousand dollars a year, that's a big increase on the current budget for acquisitions. So I think, I agree that there needs to be some way of trying to get a greater amount of money for acquisitions, I'm not sure whether it in its own right is the right way.
Councillor McTich.
Yeah, it's been good debate and I'm glad I supported pro forma, but I'm not going to support it, and I think that that is because I would like to see a trial effort in giving greater exposure to Koa before moving in this direction. In part because I think that would, I would like to see the work around the visitors first, and I would also like for us to consider, for example, the potential impact on kids. I think Cam and the new team have been, Cam and the team, some of whom are new, some of whom are not, are doing a great job of getting, I think, more kids in there. And if a family had to pay a dollar for every kid that they took in, I'm not convinced that that would be what we want to be doing with the art gallery at this time. So, yeah, I think, yes, let's give Cam and the team an opportunity for a signal that we'd like to see them do more work on the donation side of things, but let's not go as far as to investigate this yet.
Councillor Benson.
Thank you, your worship. I don't support this, I think the fact of the matter is that the residents of the city paid for it, built the art gallery and own it, and I believe there will be considerable resistance even to a nominal charge. I've got no issue with trying to increase the profile of the donations or even matching them, although that's a good idea. And I look forward with interest to the debate about charging visitors to the city, who haven't paid for the art gallery, but that's for the future. And I don't think charging is kind, is at all appropriate or desirable.
Councillor Hawke.
Yeah, I can't support this either and for a number of the reasons that have obviously been mentioned, councillor Wilson talked about the fact that you can't really take cultural institutions in isolation, and it would need to be an approach taken across the sector. And as far as I understand it, we can't compel a Tegu museum to charge admission at the museum, and so if we were to do that with our own institutions, then we could be slitting our own throats, as it were, attendance wise. Access is a big issue for me, and councillor Vandemar raised this, and it's all very well for us to sit around and decide what a nominal charge is for access to what is a phenomenal collection, but regardless of what that is, I think we would have a decrease in attendance from people who don't have a huge degree of other options for artistic and cultural stimulation. I think that is a huge social equity service that we provide in allowing free admission to our permanent collections. But just one more thing I'd like to add to this discussion, particularly with regards to how it would impact on acquisitions. In the philanthropic community, it's not uncommon for bequests to be made to institutions on the grounds that they will be freely available and accessible to the community. And my worry here is that regardless of the potential income targeted to acquisitions or not, there could be unintended consequences in how we can potentially, whether it's through estates or cash donations or whatever, how this policy is proposed could impact our ability to boost our public collection through that.
Councillor P.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify with the chief executive when that report is coming back and with some questions for our, for the next financial year.
It would, so we're hoping to bring it to community and environment on the eleventh of February. However, the report is attempting to look at an agreement with what councillor Hawkins said, one thing that has been found, the Wellington Museums Trust has given this quite considerable positive views amongst some of their staff about the idea of charging for non-rate payers, non-resident non-rate payers, except that because Tapapa is a national museum and it's also based in Wellington, and they will not charge for non-Wellington people, then the entire model falls over because as they all, that will happen is nobody will go to their museum and people will go to Tapapa because it's free. With that in mind, the exercise here has been to look at the, to explore this with all of the museum-type institutions. So the organizations that are included are in the discussion today, have been Alberston, Otago Museum, Toito, the art gallery, I think that's, oh, and Chinese Garden. So any examination of the outcome of the research and what the implications of that are, both around the likely level of turn, but also the likely reduction in number of visitors, needs to be weighed up by all of those institutions. Therefore, even if we were able to come, when we come and tell you in February, this is what we think will happen in terms of visitor numbers and in terms of, in terms of income, we will then leave each institution to go away, you know, even if they're all in accord, they'll each need to go back to their own boards and make some decisions about whether they will take part in the trial. If they don't all take part in it, then our suggestion would be that we don't take any further. So while we'll have an initial report to you, hopefully on the February the eleventh, it is likely that then it will take some time in order to get this really to implement. There's also, the report is clear that there's some expenditure upfront, so Toito, for example, has two or three entries in exits, and so you have to have one-way turnstiles so that people who exit down the far door don't come in either, they'll have forced staff, so these things all have to be explored. It's reasonably simple, but it's not completely simple. So I expect if we come up with, here's what we think it will make and here's the impact on visitor numbers, and if you were to be happy with that, and we go back and the institutions all agree they would be willing to do it as a trial, we may well not have that in time to put a budgeted income line in the annual plan, however, that budget would sit there and then we would come to you with a separate report, potentially to say, for example, put it aside at the end of the year, you make a decision on it. So that's just in terms of how the timing might unfold.
Thank you for that, and a lot of that, and why the debate followed shortly, I think I won't be voting for the resolution. A further question would be, and a lot of suggestion about matching funds, how we build that into a budget line. It could be anything between sort of two thousand and twenty thousand or even more, so I don't know how you actually plan to match in the budget.
Trying to match donations, you probably have to do it retrospectively, so donations that are gained, the easiest way, I think, is donations that are gained until the thirtieth of June or you put a date, till the thirtieth of February, you put that in the budget on the first of July the following year, for example.
Now, I note there's a couple of people who want to speak who have already spoken, is there anyone who hasn't spoken? Councillor Bezic, you have spoken.
Oh, I just listened.
I think you deserve a chance to speak again.
I think the intent of councillor Thompson's resolution was to, for a trial, and I supported that, but having heard the CEO's explanation as to what this report, I'm happy to leave it till then, but I, and I wouldn't call it an admission fee either, I'd call it an acquisition fee or something like that, because there are a lot of people who go into the art gallery who would be fit to put some punch towards an acquisition fee because the future of the galleries is dependent on acquiring more works of art. So I'm prepared to, I'm happy to leave it to that.
Well, just a question in respect of the matching idea that was proposed, which sounds a jolly good idea, but I wonder how you would cope with the incentive for someone who happened to want to make a major bequest by way of the donation box and suddenly the council found a two million dollar unexpected match to make. I mean, it's, there are lots of people who would do that, I'm sure, at some level or another.
I think you could have a policy that set a maximum on the size of your...
It would be most unfortunate.
In some ways, if we had more financial flexibility, it'd be lovely to put up to the community and say, we've got half a million dollars here, we will pay that out, dollar for dollar matching for donations made during the next twelve months, up to that amount. And that might get some of the more wealthy benefactors in the city to establish what could be a much more significant fund for acquisitions over the future. I think our gallery has got fantastic artwork, fantastic collection because of those very generous benefactors, predominantly a number of decades ago. And things have changed, and people who are, can be benefactors have lots of options of where they put their money in. In some ways, we might wish to try and incentivize them thinking seriously about the art gallery, which has, you know, it's getting a hold of its collection, I think, because it just can't afford to fill that hole. And I think a little bit more financial flexibility and maybe we should give it a go.
Okay, before everyone wants to have another crack, I'm going to have my first one. I note that we're not being asked to agree to putting a charge on, we're being asked, what we're doing is saying, asking staff to include consideration of it in the report that's coming. the report that's coming. I personally have considerable reservations about a fee like this's efficacy, but I think that those points will be brought out in the report for us to decide. And on the basis that that isn't a huge amount of extra work in this report, and clearly, as far as the chief executive has said, that it's coming to us on the 11th of February, and she's confident that it'll be there then, then we can't think of a tremendous amount more. So I'll support this for the purpose of canvassing the issue in the report for our further consideration a little later. Councilor Thompson, would you like to speak?
Why, no largely in full-scale retreat, your worship. I'm thinking of invading Gallipoli next week.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to put it. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
It's lost. So that, I believe, oh, yes, that, I believe, is the end of the Museums, Libraries and Art section, eh? So I'll move from the chair, the three recommendations relating, in this case, to museums, libraries and art galleries, second to Councilor Staines, all those discussions.
Well, I just thought, both, there are two institutions in particular that have vastly exceeded their targets in the last 12 months, and that it should be acknowledged that they're doing so well at a time of constraint. So it may or may not have been the appropriate time to do that, but I just thought.
I'm more than happy, after we've confirmed this, for you to put up a resolution noting.
Well, I think perhaps it would be more appropriate for us to do that when they reported that to us at the end of any financial year. But I just thought, given that we've all remarked on that.
I'll pass it on.
Yeah.
And looking, if I could put in a plug for the art gallery at the moment.
Can I just call about?
I suppose.
So all those in favour, please say aye. Oh, discussion? Did you have some more?
Yeah, I just wondered if this was an opportunity to bring up the idea that the art gallery and the two museums might benefit if they had the unified oversight of a single director. It has been suggested before. We've just gone through each individually now and see that there's a lot of positive development there.
Well, are you heading for a resolution? Because if you are, can you, it's not relevant to this vote, but if you are, I'll take this vote, and then if you want to put something up, that's.
Okay.
So we're just talking at this point about three recommendations on the decision sheet. As I say, in this case, that's related to museums, libraries and art galleries. All those in favour, please say aye. Against? Karen, Councilor Vandemar.
Basically, I was just wanting to test the water to see what council thoughts were on the idea of getting even more benefit from these three great institutions that we have with the unified oversight of a single director. The idea has been knocking around for quite a few years now, certainly since I started the council. And I don't want to get in the road of the independence of the individual institutions, but I can see that especially in terms of the marketing to outside tourists, operators, et cetera, that, and also coordinating events and advertising all three of the institutions together, that having one director with oversight board might have some advantages. I understand Sue has something to say. Yeah.
You probably will remember the report that was written by Rodney Wilson, the report. Earlier on, there had been a shared director of Toyto and the Art Gallery, and the general feeling of both sides of that was that that wasn't, that it didn't work well, that it wasn't well received. The recommendations in that report specifically stated, these were just the council-owned institutions, so it didn't include Otago Museum, is that those two were split apart and each got their own director, which is what we now have. Some of that report also suggested a higher-level trust structure be put in place, rather like the Wellington Museums Trust, that have its own chief executive and that oversee all of the cultural institutions. A report came to the council, and we effectively, we said, thank you for the Rodney Wilson report, and we are putting it to one side. We are not going to take it any further at this point in time. However, we would come back to you with some ideas around how we might better manage this collection of institutions. That work is well underway, and there will be a report coming to you that largely focuses on synergies that are possible between the museums. It doesn't include the art gallery, because at this point in time, the staff view around the table is that there is the director there running the art gallery. It's in many ways, in many ways, the synergies are to be found between the two museums. And a very, very positive and collaborative working relationship is developing between the two museums. So we'll be coming to talk to you around what possibilities that hold sometime in the next few weeks. I've seen a draft report. I can't tell you exactly whether it will come to the next Community and Environment Committee or the one after, but it isn't far away. So we are exploring these issues.
Quite happy with that. All right, we now move on to section nine, Sport, Recreation and Leisure. First line is Parks and Recreation Services Planning. That's 9.1 in your large poll. Councilor Wiley, you had done.
Thank you, your worship. I just want to respond to a comment that Councilor Thompson made about South Dunedin. He mentioned probably that Rock Hard Bagels and Robbies were the only places really to eat. I'm more than happy to take it for a free lunch in South Dunedin. Very good coffee, awesome cheese stobs, and you know, there's great mixture of Chinese, Turkish, Thai or sushi down there. And so I'm more than happy to take it for lunch sometime to see South Dunedin.
Not everything that Councilor Thompson says should be taken advantage of grain sauce.
You can presumably have that with your bagel when you go. Right, I can facilitate the coordination of the diary, should you wish to take up your honour. Right, so the first line, as I say, is Parks, Recreation Services Planning. That's page 9.1. Any, Councilor Hawke?
I just, for clarity, perhaps this is a decision that predates me, as most of these have been. Why is the Event Attraction Fund being parked, no pun intended, in the Parks and Recreation Services planning budget?
If I can through the chair, my understanding is, as the person who was happy to receive this, was that the decision was made on, pretty much on, I guess, a fiscal common sense basis. It was in terms of a service-level agreement. A service-level agreement had been put together for the, in respect to the community benefit. Arrangements with the stadium whereby $700,000 was made available to the stadium for benefiting community support activities. At the same time when the event fund was discussed by council, it was at the stage of looking at a similar type service-level agreement in terms of accountability. So in retrospect, excuse the pun, I guess it was parked there, so that the two could be looked at in context. And because of the context, it was between both service-level agreements based around accountability for council providing money for some measured return or benefit. One case, community support, and the other, events attraction.
So it's not anticipated that that fund will be distributed by Parks and Rec planning?
No.
Mr Avery, did you?
No, sorry.
Right, Councilor McTach.
We had the Wapoei Post-Community Board come in here a couple of days ago, yesterday, just yesterday morning, and raise concern with regards pest control, particularly in Mount Wapoei Reserve, that particular concern. We don't have the level of budget changes here made to determine whether or not there has been any reduction in the pest control budgets, I suppose, or any increase. But I would welcome any staff comment that you have on there.
Through to the chair, so just confirming with the Parks Manager that Mount Wapoei is within the scope of the pest control programs that are organised at the moment and funded over in this budget over the next few years. But with Mount Wapoei, when Mount Wapoei was, if I can, just quickly, when it was originally set up and council took, I guess, a measure of responsibility and control for Mount Wapoei, there was a lot of promise from other organisations, very much supported by the community board, but there were other organisations in the community, some of the national, who promised, I guess, if all things were equal, that they would contribute and support. We've yet to go back and get some firm level of support, and we know that we will have to do that, equally, raise the level of, let's just say, the service level of pest control in that particular reserve. There were understandings and commitments, but they were verbal. We do need to follow those. But at the moment, a level of pest control focused around, obviously, possums is a prime one, and goats, et cetera, you know, they're more obvious. But this pest control, as you know, I mean, there are a number of pests, and council cannot control them all.
Can I just, to your pleasure, just check with the Parks Manager. There's no change to the pest control budget. So it hasn't increased, hasn't decreased. It's the same.
Any further questions on that line? Now, the next line is Parks and Reserves, 9.5. Sorry. Are you, that's where you've got it. That's fine. I'm not, and moving on from there, Parks and Reserves Administration, 9.15. Product Services, 9.19. Councilor McTach.
Just in terms of the revenue, particularly around the gym operation, are we going to get a report back on that at any stage, or is it just can, just assume that business as usual will continue?
Well, at the moment, the budget's based on business as usual continuing. If you want a report, we can do that. Is that what you're looking for?
Well, I'm just aware that this, I think, we have had over two consecutive years now discussion around the viability or otherwise, or declining revenue from the gym operation. Is it staff's perspective that there is a concern around that, or is the status quo simply, is it staff's opinion that the status quo is viable?
Through the chair, the gym still makes a profit, and which is not supported by rates. It still stands on its own. The reason that we've had a drop in revenue is probably mainly due to the increase in a number of other gyms that have run up over the last three years. There's been 13 new gyms start up since we built our gym, and they offer lots of different activities and stuff that we do not offer. And that's why we are seeing a decrease in the revenue stream. It's got to a stage where I believe it's starting to level out, and I still believe that we, it is a viable operation, and it's still, at this stage, I think, there's $131,000 ahead, there you go, in the green. So it still operates.
We're not really plummeting into the red.
No. No, definitely not coming to the red. I mean, that was the agreement when the gym was built. It had to stand on its own, and it still does it, and we monitor that each year. And if it was to get to that state, then we would have to bring that back to council to look at it from there. But at this stage, it still makes money, and it still stands on its own.
Thank you.
Councilor Hawkins.
Firstly, I guess I should declare a conflict of interest, and this may shock some of you as a member of the gym. But I do wonder.
You're going to.
Without speaking of the efficacy of its facilities, obviously, has it ever been investigated, the idea of membership being made? I don't know this, I don't know whether this would even be possible, whether memberships could be made available for the gym specifically, rather than for the entire complex?
Through the chair, yes, that was tried, but they actually had it as, it was independently operated prior to the council taking it over. But the, it was too hard to police to actually do that. We looked at putting in a door at the back and all those sorts of things, but in doing that, you know, we risked the potential that people could actually come in the back door without us knowing. So we needed to have one point of entry. We did look at, we have looked at that in the past, but it just doesn't, once people get in the door and they go to the gym, they could either go for a swim or go to the gym if they wanted to. So it was too hard to police. Unless you put some more gates in somewhere that just makes it more irritable for people to actually get into the facility.
And just a second thing, as much as we all love talking about this fantastic summer weather we've been having, can we expect, given the meteorological conditions, that the revenue for this financial year through the St Clair Saltwater Falls will be significantly or at all lower than forecast? And is that something that we need to consider for the budget?
Through the chair, surprisingly, St Clair is probably, at this stage, is about $4,000 ahead of budget, even with the bad weather. For whatever reason, I don't know, there are a lot more going out to the pool, even in the very adverse conditions that we've had. But in the same, both Port Chalmers and Mosville are down in revenue, and that's attributed to the cold weather. But for whatever reason, there are still lots of people going out to St Clair. I was out the other morning when it was absolutely freezing cold, and there were 21 people in the pool. So it's been utilised very, very well, but the other two are not so. They're not stacking up this year, and that's due to the weather.
Just take the roof off the Port Chalmers.
Councilor P.
Thanks. Just a question about the charges and increases at 9.23 and 9.25. I see you're holding the 9.23 charges pretty consistent with last year or this year, but except for toddler time going up. I just wanted to comment on that and the reasons for that, and the reasons for the, at St Clair.
Through the chair, St Clair is supposed to be in line with Moana, and for whatever reason, and I'll take the blame for that, it wasn't put up last year, which it should have been. If we increase Moana, it was a council decision some number of years ago that St Clair and Moana, when it was upgraded, St Clair, that they would stay the same. That was missed out last year. So that was just an error on my part. I missed that. So that's why it didn't go up. Toddler time, we're looking at increasing that due to the fact, you know, it's a pretty cheap option, and we're going to take off the constraints of actually being able to come in at certain times. We're going to actually make it all day and all the time instead of at the moment. It's a specific timeframe, but we're going to remove that so that they can come in through the whole day and the whole night if they wish to.
Excellent. Okay. And just one question, which has been raised, I think it was yesterday, about whether, I was at the community board, there was a question, about whether someone with a concession could actually use more of one pool.
Through the chair, no, they can't. The only one that we have, we have a pool spot, which you can purchase, which then gives you the ability to do that. But if you don't have that, then it can only be used for the facility that it's purchased for. But there is the opportunity to buy up an old pool spot.
So now that you've got the charges consistent across the clearing of Moana, what would be the reason? Is that out of price or is there something else?
We only have card systems at Moana at this stage. The other ones do not have a card system, so there's no way that we could actually check up on them until such a time as we get plus two integrated to the community pool. Then basically, we don't have the technology to do that at the start.
So if St Clair doesn't have a reading of those cards?
No, that's not.
But are you planning to get away?
Yes, we are, yeah. But as anything, there's a cost associated with doing it, and we are looking at it and upgrading the system. So we could actually, over a period of time, that all of the pools be able to have the same system attached to them.
What would that cost?
I'll top my head up.
Are we talking teams of thousands or just?
You'd probably be looking at probably, if you did all the pools, probably between $30,000 and $40,000 to do that.
And there's no budget call there at the moment. There's no explicit budget line for there.
Councilor Wilson.
I just wanted to understand, just looking at budget lines on page 20, you've got you've got some things being held the same, in fact, Moana Pool, that's for revenue expenditure. Some are being held the same, some are going up and some are going down. Some have been consistently the same forever and we keep making statements we're not lowering the service level agreement anywhere. And I'm just wondering how long some things like the Moana Gao and the Middle March Pool, for example, have been set at that level? And whether that in effect is a reduction of service or not in those areas? Have you any idea when the, when Moana Gao, for example, went up last?
Through the Chair, no, I don't. I mean, I guess from, I can't remember when Moana Gao or Middle March Pools went up. But I can check that up and get back to you on that.
It's, I mean, I have to declare an interest in knowing something about Middle March Pool, but it's just we continually like, use the line that service levels aren't going down. But if they're not going up with inflation, they may well be. And if we don't know what their effect is having on communities and we haven't asked that question, I'm not quite sure that we can honestly say that, make that statement.
Council Stans.
Just back on to fees and charges. I just, I understand that you've done the correction for the admission to St Clair. But when you look at the percentages shift for an adult concession or a family, just at the top of the page, and look at the percentage increase of that is, and then you go down to look at the season tickets, the percentage increases are wildly different. So if you're looking at, say, the concession, it's a sixteen percent increase for a single entry concession. But if you want a season ticket concession, it's a twenty-two percent increase. I just don't understand why, why there's such a difference. Like, I would have thought that those rough percentages would transfer through into the season tickets on the basis that it's just bringing it into line with Moana.
Yeah, through the Chair, there was a report to annual plan last year that looked to rationalise the fee structure for all the pools. That was a report that dealt with those different variations and the reasons for that. And it really centred, as I would call it, speed around the adult charge and then everything else hanging off the adult charge. So last year, St Clair was raised about the different increases. As Steve said, the only thing with St Clair is that St Clair should have had that increase last year, but it didn't.
I'm just questioning the relationship between a single entry and a season entry. But the same, the same specification, if you're a concession, single entry, bringing you into line with Moana moves you about sixteen percent. But if you're a concession entry, it moves you by twenty-two percent.
If you go, the report last year identified that there had been, over time, a differential between those different tickets and ticket prices. The report last year looked to have a more rational basis for determining all of those. So last year, there was the same thing was picked up about the different increases on those various tickets. What you're seeing is basically the results of the reporting decision from last year that gave a greater consistency of approach around the concession tickets and the children's tickets and everything else. So I don't agree...
I should see the same percentage difference between Moana Pool, single entry concession and season concession.
Between the twelve thirteen year and thirteen fourteen year previously, you should see the same difference for Moana Pool, I would imagine, I would assume.
But through the Chair, what we did was we took the adult fee going and then we calculated everything off that so that when you change, if you change the adult fee, then everything's calculated down and it changed automatically to coincide with the rest of them. So that's how it was worked out.
Council Law. Just a slight question, it's actually a wee bit sort of management rather than governance, but the question is, when you buy a concession ticket and you're prepaid for thirty swims, why is it that if you don't use them in a certain time, you have to lose the balance?
Through the Chair, we have a term to conditions and for if you buy a concession card, it has a life expectancy of one year. And we've had that in place for probably the last sort of eight or nine years. Due to the fact that in the past, we had people coming in fifteen years later and we still had one the other day who had a card that she got in nineteen, I think nineteen seventy-eight or nineteen seventy-nine. Yeah, she wanted to use it, so we just put an expiry date on them so that we don't have these problems that we have had in the past.
Council Waddick.
Thank you. We're looking through the revenue. Is there a reason why...
Sorry, I played Jordan.
Nine twenty. Moana Pool revenue seventeen oh four, dropping to fifteen fifty-four. Any reason or...
Through the Chair, numbers coming through the door are not what they were in the past and that includes gym as well. We, I think we've been a victim of our own success, really, at the end of the day. We've had, you know, huge numbers coming through the door and people have, are not coming as regularly as they were due to the fact that when they come up there, they see the car parks full and all those sorts of things and they come in and they can't get any lane space and they go away. So, you know, they're not coming as regularly as they used to and it's just, yeah, just the nature of the beast of the month.
Can also say that this year, we looked at, for the fourteen fifteen year, we also looked at the budgets and looked at the difference between, previous years between the budgets and the actuals. And our actuals have been under the budget for some time. So we looked to try and make the budget here a bit more realistic around what had actually been achieved. It's still a stretch, this one, but historically, we haven't been meeting our budget anywhere.
Okay, I guess that ties into my next question because I'm trying to work out when you're expecting less people to turn up to get the staff costs to go up.
Yeah. And I think that if you go back to the previous budgets, I don't think the revenue targets have been met for the last couple of years. So as ELT looked at and said, let's try and make sure that this budget is still a stretch. So you've still got the same numbers of people turning up as previous years, definitely the same staffing requirements.
And finally, Learn to Swim, is there any government funding there that's considering the central government funding there, that's considering the Learn to Swim programmes? I'm sorry, I've been up to the flame with that.
Through the Chair, we don't get any funding from central government or anybody else for Learn to Swim. We just have a Learn to Swim programme at the pool. And for this next term, term one, we're going to have, I think it's two thousand two hundred children registered in our Learn to Swim. And we're basically at the stage where we can no longer put in more people in. We don't have the water space to actually accommodate any more. So, but we don't get any funding, that's a self-funding operation.
Thank you.
Council Hawkins.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, you mentioned that when you've been a victim of your own success and that car parking and pool lane capacity had led to a decrease in the frequency of repeat visitors. Is that anecdotal or is that available in some kind of hard data form?
The numbers coming through the door are about the same. I think last year, I think we had six hundred and thirty-nine thousand visitations through the facility for the whole year. What does change is the number of lanes, lanes from us coming in. But what changes is the parents then come in, they use the leisure pool. So you're not losing, you lose lanes from, lanes from it, but you pick it up by having more of your leisure type people coming in the door.
But the car parking or...
Car parking is an issue. It has been for the last ten years and it's not going to go away.
But you know that you have data that says that people are returning on weekends due to car parking?
Yeah, we have a survey every year done by Sums and that's one of the issues that comes up every time is the car parking, or lack of car parking. And I talk to a number of people that come around and, you know, some people from the council and they'll tell me that they'll drive around and if they can't get a car up, they'll go home. So, you know, and it happens on a regular basis, especially early afternoon from about three thirty o'clock when you have all your Learn to Swim and all your squads and clubs and all those sorts of things. It just becomes absolutely congested and sure, you know, and there is not enough room for people to park. So and we get them parking on the verges and all sorts of things.
Council Wilson.
This time last year, we had a number of people came to us or contacted us about concerns about the lane charges for sports groups or pool. I'm just checking with the new structure that's put in place there, where those issues have now been fairly well dealt with and they're actually helping?
Through the Chair, we haven't had any major issues with the lane charges. I think everyone that's been doing it, they've accepted them and they've just basically got on and dealt with it. We haven't had really any issues at all. I mean, I haven't, haven't had any complaints about it. They've just, I think they've adapted their fees to it and basically that's how they're working it. But there doesn't seem to be any issues that I can, that I've had, unless Tony's had some, I haven't had any.
Only from the New England Swimming Coaching Board, who run the swimming training, they've noted that the lane charges, they believe, do impact on the members in terms of the cost to the, so these are the training squads. So they've expressed concerns about that and I've suggested to them that they'll need to make a submission to the annual plan process because council's clear around it's intent. So we haven't waived, we haven't discounted any of those lane charges. That's someone that I've heard of, it's the swimming coach board. And they've got the kids that turn up five days a week and having to pay that lane charge. But that's him.
Okay, thank you.
Right, can we move on now to the report, which is on page nine point two nine? No, sorry, it's not. It's twelve point seven seven to twelve point nine eight in the large folder. I was getting that online ahead of myself. And this is the investigative work and funds, funding for Dunedin Aquatic Facilities. I'll throw it open for questions for a start and then we can address the recommendations. So, questions, Councils? Council Matters?
Does it really make good sense to be putting a lot of resource into investigating options for a Moskew Pool, which we may not be able to raise funds to achieve?
That's a good point, but I suggest that you should speak to that in the debate on whatever recommendations come up. I'll just get factual clarification on the issues in the report and then come back to that. You might want to do something. Council McTavish.
Just looking at the council motions that are quoted on page twelve seventy-nine of our report. The fifth one that council moved was that we set more detail on the potential conversion of the boiler at Moana Pool, including projected capital costs and operational savings to be reported back to twenty fourteen fifteen annual plan deliberations. Is there any reason why we don't have that detail today?
Sorry.
Sorry, just looking at twelve seventy-nine of our report, the fifth part of the council motion, which requested that projected capital costs and operational savings on the proposed conversion of the Moana Pool be reported back to these deliberations. Is there any reason why we don't have those here?
Through the Chair, the report was going to be done by Neville Orton, who was the energy manager. And when he resigned, basically the work stopped from there because we didn't have any expertise to sort of go out and get the information that was required. So that's why that hasn't been tabled.
So just on that, basically, we didn't get, resources were limited, but page twelve eighty-one talks about what's going to need to be done in terms of investigation for that from LPG to woodchips. So it's, what we're proposing in here is that that gets done and there needs to be some funds to decide for that. So that's part of the hundred and five thousand that's going to ask for.
I understand that, but I guess what concerns me is that as a member of governance looking for investor save options, we've talked about them. The only one that I can identify in our reports is, as potential, is this particular one. We don't have the data around it, we don't know what the capital cost would be if we did want to invest in it. Is there any way that in this financial year, we just do the work to have it recorded back in time for the final deliberations on this plan?
Yes, I've just checked with Maria, so we will be getting that done and it will be, she's reasonably confident we will be able to get that done in time for the final annual plan deliberations.
Thank you.
Council Evans.
Is it on page twelve eighty-one, is it enough of a steer, Council McTavish, for the estimation that we would get a, we would recoup the capital cost of establishing woodchip heating source in five years of savings made from the conversion? An enormous increase in the price of gas, which seems rather odd. But that's just one of these things that's happened. If we can get the conversion recouped inside five years, I would have thought that this was actually a very, very good saving, long term, even though it requires a wee bit of upfront. If that estimate is valid, would that be enough for us to make a decision on? Or is that a very rough estimate?
That's a very rough estimate. So however, if that does get borne through a bit more detailed work, then we would put that up as an investor save option rather the same as we did in last year's annual plan.
Right, so I would be very happy to vote for an investor save option like that and I'd like that to be separate from any other investigation funding that's been paid yet.
Just around the biomass specifically, yes, I understand that.
So I was actually just going to, very good point, I was just about to clarify that if we need to be, and I've had this confirmed by Chief Executive, that the investigation into whatever issues there were around Moskew are not tied to an investigation of the biomass boiler system at Moana. And the investigations are separate too. And I say that in the context, I must say, of some frustration because this issue, and this is not, I'm not laying this at the feet of the fault of the staff, but this investigation into and the potential for conversion at Moana has been present for about three years. And previous Chief Executive and I had meetings with suppliers and one of the options is, there's no capital upfront. We don't even need to own it. So there's some frustration about how long this has taken to get to us and to take advantage of it because we could have been saving money. If we'd put it in place three years ago, we would have paid for it by now. So I want to confirm that that report can be kept separate for the two parts, depending what resolution we come to and we can progress it.
Just on that, you're, through the Chair, on page twelve eighty-two. On page twelve eighty-two, just to open it, we've split out what we think is required for the investigative work for the woodchip boiler as opposed to the investigative work for the Moskew and Moana Pool options. So if you wanted maybe a resolution around that item specifically as opposed to the Moskew and Moana Pool.
Well, apropos that, is twenty-five, just to say figure, it seems rather a lot to investigate something which I know previous staff members actually already put my...
The issue is that we know in a general sense about the cost benefit solve woodchip versus gas, but in terms of Moana Pool, we've actually got to get into issues around the design of where you actually put this thing, how you build it, what its capacity is, how it would fit in with the current pool operations, those sorts of things. Because we know that the, what the proposed routine is, but we need to make sure, there's issues about how it would fit within the Moana Pool environment, which is more complicated.
Can I just say, we're going to report that back for you by the before final annual plan deliberations. We're going to have to do this in the current year. So I've just suggested to Carolyn, Carolyn's just come to a quick chat about it, we can find up to twenty-five thousand dollars in this year's budget. I'll come back and tell you where, we'll have to sit down and have a look in the area where we're anticipating under spend and we'll get that investigation done now so that you have it as an investor save option in the final round of annual plan deliberations. Which means you don't need to pass a resolution, I will just go away and do that. So just note, make a note, Pam, that I'm going away to do that if you're comfortable with it. I'm out of this year's budget.
Council Hawkins.
In the woodchip boiler, the reservations I have is that the amount of boilers that are running on woodchip is going to be the same as LPG when we first put in it. Once we get a large percentage over to LPG, from LPG over to woodchip, we're going to get the influx of price rises for supply. So what I would like to see is the city investigator, the waste going to the landfill.
the waste going to landfill in the way of wood, the waste from our forestry, by purchasing a boiler similar to what they had got at Southern Woods in Bilton, it brings anything consorta, it's up to three hundred. So therefore, overseas, they harvest the waste wood out of forestry, and lay the slab, and it's used for many purposes. I done a study with a gentleman from Christchurch on a multinational operation to run massive boilers twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And it was very, very viable using wood slash wood waste and everything. So we've got our own forest trees, and the nervous society, we put in a woodchip boiler, we play the woodchip.
Can I suggest that those considerations be included in the research that will be done for the viability?
Yeah, the other one is for the Mozgill pool, as I have talked to one or two councillors, on, there's a heat supply at Fontira from their cooling operation, their core. Can that be somehow looked into to keep the swimming pool in Mozgill?
That can be included in that. Councillor P?
Yes, thank you. Just in terms of the Mozgill pool and investigative work, but that include, it hasn't already been thought of, the impact of a larger Mozgill boiler on Moana Pool, operational, budget, basically. I think I read somewhere about a production of sixty thousand swimmers a year at the new Mozgill pool, and just what impact that would have on Moana, could be, the initial might not be, in terms of the budget. But that, that work be done too, in terms of how, you know, whether...
From memory, the Aquatic Services Working Party, that was actually operated twice, because it was reconstituted, did consider, now councillor Wilson, you may have had a refresh my memory.
Well, my understanding is that the Moana Pool's at capacity and overflow, and that there isn't demand for new resources, and therefore, there may be some flow effects. You can't fill that until you build it, but there is definitely demand for more sports from this place in Dunedin. That's why both requirements, both suggestions have come through, it's both been required. Mozgill have been the highest demand now.
Yeah, sorry, I, I would say there may be benefits from reducing the congestion at Moana, but anyway, it would be nice if we had some more definitive work on that , Chris.
Okay. Councillor McTavish?
Sorry, you caught me in halfing through a conversation. Okay. I have two questions around the Mozgill pool scenario, and the concerns are two-fold. The first is, what analysis have we done about the, in effect, what the different Mozgill options would offer in relation to the demand out there from consented subdivisions in line with our spatial plan? And what analysis have we done of the proposed size of a facility in relation to growth? Because development contributions, development contribution policy, there is a need to analyse every proposal in relation to its growth component, service level increase component, its renewal component. And it concerns me that we've gone to at this point without having done that work. Secondly, there's some clear indications in the earlier report from planning staff, which I raised at the time, around the fact that we should not be planning a facility that will result in situations that we don't want to be envisaging in our spatial plan. And I have no evidence that we've done any analysis around that. So have staff done those analyses, and they're just not here in front of us, or have those pieces of work not been done?
A couple of things. One is just a reminder that development contributions under the proposed changes in the, in the bill that's in front of parliament, is that there will be no development contributions able to be collected for aquatic facilities. So in that sense, the cost of growth has not been, is quite likely to not be a valid issue. However, there is now a standing methodology right across the council, apportioning growth with new capital spent. One thing I just would urge you to bear in mind is there is, there is no capital money put aside in the budget for a new, there's four hundred thousand dollars, I think, for a big investment in the Mozgill pool. So if you are going to want to put money in, you're going to need to have investigative work done. You are still living in, within tight financial constraints in terms of debt repayment, and so when you're considering whether it's worth doing the investigative work, I guess you're needing to have a very early think about whether you want to raise that extra debt in our ears. And if you're thinking you may not want to raise that extra debt for three or four years, I would recommend you do the investigative work just ahead of that, because things change, times change, technology changes, and we certainly have evidence of having done investigative work. And then seven years later, like the South Dunedin Community Complex, when the money starts to get near the front of the ten-year march, that needs to be done, because things have changed. So there's generic work done on the impact of growth, but it's sort of standardised across everything we do?
Okay. Yeah. My concern in particular is in relation to the spatial plan, because I think the previous councillor, which I had concerned about, has indicated that a Mozgill option is the preferred option. They have done that in the absence, as far as I can see, of any considerations in relation to the spatial plan and any effects that putting a facility out there of a certain size may have in terms of any drawcard, et cetera. So the feedback from the spatial plan people is that replacing a failing facility in Mozgill is quite acceptable, that dramatically increasing the size of the aquatic facility in Mozgill does have a likely consequence of encouraging development in part of town that the spatial plan suggests is not a preeminent place for development, or for too much additional development. Thank you.
Just one other thing too, that, the minimum, in terms of the Mozgill pool option, the minimum that is suggested here is the minimum sized community pool that you'd put in these days. So that's a twenty-five metre long pool, and it's ten lanes, that's the standard pool. If you're going to put a pool in, I'd advise you wouldn't go for smaller than that. And there's no other facilities around it, it's just a pool, an learner's pool. And so that's the reason for the minimum size, and then there's other options where you add on other bits. And there was a lot of work done, there was some early work done around growth projections and usage and all sorts of things which underlie that, but that gives rise to the minimum size. It's not based on necessarily detailed analysis of growth projections in Mozgill. So there's two bits to that. When you're going to put a pool in, this is the minimum type that you put in these days.
Councillor Stans?
Just following on from councillor Hall's comments, about, must be four or five years ago now, I had the opportunity to visit a construction waste minimisation operation in Christchurch. So this was before the earthquakes. And they were bringing, all construction waste effectively went through that operation. They separated out all the wood, the wood went through a chipper and metal extraction, then into a drying facility just to bring its moisture content down a bit. They could not get, they were selling all of their construction wood waste into that process. So one thing that was taken into consideration when the polytechnic converted was when the boiler specifications are being looked at, whether they are, some producers of boilers cite out the use of wood waste. And I think for this city, there might be an opportunity to gain some funding from the Waste Minimisation Fund, to help us start a process where we take our construction waste, and councillor Hall quotes his, because he's been part of this in the past, that we can process our construction waste, minimise the amount going into landfill, and get a benefit by the reuse of the biomass materials that are coming through, to augment the fuel source, so that you're not entirely dependent on woodchip, which I agree with councillor Hall. As more boilers are swimming over to woodchip, sooner or later, the supply of woodchip is going to start to be constrained, and the prices will go up. So we just need to be conscious that that is something in our future, and we should plan for it.
Okay. I know councillor Hall, you want to respond to that, but I just would remind everyone that we're getting a bit off the subject. All of those issues will quite likely be part of the investigation into the Moana Pool, so.
This one I was going to make, is the companies that are offering no charge for putting the boiler in, are trying to tie you to a purchase of here.
No, in fact, the model that I was referring to was one where we never own it, that they put it in, and what they sell is the heating, simply. And that way, it's a straight deal where they put the boiler in, they sell you the heater to so many, so much per gigajoule, and there's no purchase, except that you inherit the ownership after fifteen years or something.
Yeah, well, where the problem comes over that scenario, the only product that can be used through that boiler is from their supply, and that's where we can't use the power.
I understand that, and those things will all be taken into account. So councillor Bez?
I think we've talked, which issue is going to take, so we're going to report on that, and chief executive officer has indicated that she has some funds somewhere that will be applied to that. With regard to the Mozgill pool option, and once again, the chief executive officer alluded to the fact that we have in the past put aside funds for capital works, and that we should consider, not necessarily now, but in the future, applying funds to Mozgill, because it's going to be some time before we're looking forward to do it. And that's probably true. But I would like to think that we could include for public consultation, the eighty thousand dollars that we're looking at for, to investigate pool in Mozgill. Because the people in Mozgill have been saying for quite some time, hey, let's know what the figure is. Because there, once again, as it is with South Dunedin, there's a group out there that really wants some action, and are prepared to do something. So for the sake of eighty thousand dollars, if we gave them some sort of a steer, then I'm sure that they will get in behind the council. Now, there is some merit in actually doing this now, because although it might be some time before a council will say, yes, we're prepared to put up the X amount of dollars, or whatever it is it's going to cost for a new pool. If you, if councillors look back over the years where we've looked at the likes of Toitu, the upgrade of the town hall, the Dunedin Centre, all of those projects had a very long lead-in time, and certainly the costs were going up. But we actually got in the end, through public consultation, exactly what the people wanted. And although there was extra costs involved, because we're having to upgrade our reports each time, and because of the delays, it cost more than what we originally thought, the same thing will inevitably happen with the Mozgill pool. But I think if we give the people in Mozgill and Dunedin who want to use this a lead-in, then they will get in behind it. One of the reasons, and Mr Prescott's already alluded to it, that Moana is dropping off in numbers, because they've reached absolute capacity. And there are people who are saying, hey, we're not going down there because they can't get in to train or whatever. And just coincidentally, the same thing is happening at Sinclair. Early morning at Sinclair is absolute capacity at Sinclair, and that's because people are coming down from Moana and training down at Sinclair Pool. So there is a, there is a strong need, or an urgent need, in my view, to upgrade our aquatic facilities. So I'm prepared to move the resolution that we do put aside eighty thousand dollars to investigate a pool in Mozgill, bearing in mind that this will go out for public consultation, and I'm sure that you, councillors will be pleasantly surprised at the support that they get from Mozgill people if we do put that in the annual plan, and it comes to fruition. Then they can get behind the project and do something about it. So I'm not sure with your prepared resolution at this time, but I'm prepared.
I'm just, can you just pack that, because there's a couple of others being, I hope they're questionists, but a couple of others, and then I think it's time we got to some resolutions, and I'm happy to take my, councillor Wilson, and then councillor Thompson.
I support everything John just said. I'm just wondering, look, there's been four hundred thousand dollars in the budget for, that we've just carried forward every year for upgrades to that pool. And I'm very aware of the budget lines we've got at the moment. If we're not going to upgrade this pool, and I think that's the will of the Mozgill, why aren't we using some of that eighty thousand as part of this funding for the, or have I got that four hundred thousand wrong?
I think four hundred thousand is further out, and that budget's there for the anticipated renewal costs or upgrades of the existing pool facility. There isn't, sorry, we need to check the budget.
Okay, sorry, I had thought that that was something that we pushed out.
Sorry.
Oh, yeah, that funding sits further out in two thousand and sixteen, seventeen. Sorry, sorry, apologies.
And just, I've got a note on page twelve eighty-two, that eighty thousand's for both looking at Mozgill and Moana Pool, because there was options around Moana Pool as well, around parking and other things, was associated with that.
Councillor Thompson? Right. Now, moving on then to the need for a resolution to be put up, we've already talked about the need to separate the two issues, and the Moana Pool boiler side of it is taken care of. So my understanding is we don't actually need to have a resolution or motion about that. We need one. Now councillor Bez, you'd like to put something up, so what's, what you...
Well, I'd like to move that we put aside eighty thousand dollars to investigate the preferred Mozgill pool option, including appropriate site, design and funding requirements. And as Mr Aver just said, this, I presume, looks at the issue with regards to parking at Moana. That's included in that eighty as well.
You said.
So I haven't, I haven't got the exact wording for that, but if we could have a rider that says that that will be included as well, because of the...
If you look at the resolution, the recommendation twelve seventy-eight, if you take out C, twelve twenty, page twelve seventy-eight, if you took out C and changed the hundred and five to eighty, does that achieve what it is that you are looking for?
Oh, yeah, okay. Is there a second, to councillor Wiley? Second. Do you wish to speak any further to that? Councillor Bez? Okay, I'll throw it open for discussion. Councillor Wilson?
I'm going to support this, not because I, and I take on board the comments by councillor McTavish and a few others, and the CEO about capital costs going out. We just shouldn't do too much investigative work if we're not prepared to put the budget lines on. I appreciate all that. Although, I'm convinced by the community board out there, and they're willing this to, and some substantial offers already made of help financially, that if you don't give them something to work on and plan on, they actually can't help or generate that support. So it's a chicken and egg situation. It may well be that they'll come up with other solutions which don't impact on, in an optimistic frame of mind, that don't impact on rates. And I think we need to give them every opportunity to come up with those parameters. If we don't plan for it, they can't do that.
Councillor Stans?
I have some nervousness, because I don't want to see another South Dunedin library here. I have no problem with having some budget in order to refine, to a greater degree, the desire of the Mozgill community for their pool, what kind of facility that would be, because the original, the original proposals were around an aquatic centre with multiple pools. I'm really of the opinion that Mozgill needs a replacement twenty-four, sorry, seven day a week, three hundred and sixty-five day a year recreational pool. And I'm just wondering whether that in fact needs, I don't know, we've put it here, we're suggesting here eighty thousand, but if we do too much, if we spend too much money getting too much detail, I still don't believe that we're in a position to put a large capital budget in place in our LTP, certainly in the... large capital budget in place in our LTP, certainly in the next three or four years. So if the expenditure was to at least firm up an option that the Moskew community could, could be reasonably confident to get in behind and drive, but was acknowledged that the funding for it would not be occurring in the, in the next, whatever we decide, three or four years, and I think it's got to be up that length of time, then I'm happy to support it. But I, I think if we go and spend too much money on detail, I don't honestly, and we create too much anticipation, I honestly don't believe we're going to be able to deliver and I think we make a rod for our own back.
Councillor McTavish?
No, I agree with pretty much everything councillor Staines said. I think I was really uncomfortable with the motions that council passed on this issue, which are outlined on twelve seventy-nine. And I spoke at the time about the fact that I felt it was giving the Moskew community too much confidence in this council's ability to deliver a facility for them too soon. And I remain of that belief, and I remain of the belief that if we are committing to investigative funding for that specific option now, it does two things. It locks in the expectation that that is the most cost-effective way for council to, to deliver enhanced aquatic facilities for this community, and I am not sure that that is the case, I think. It was quite clear in the initial papers that we had done for us that the space issues are more acute here in Dunedin than they are at Moskew. And that Dunedin was the one that was turning away schools for things like swimstation lessons that will learn to swim or whatever they are, not Moskew. And it's not clear to me that the work has been done around the population growth or the spatial plan. For all of those reasons, I find it very difficult to talk in a motion about the preferred Moskew Pool option. I also find it difficult to endorse a piece of work which I think will be giving that community greater confidence than we are able to give them at this time. For that reason, I could, I could support these motions if it had something along the lines of, at the end, noting that analysis against the financial strategy is yet to occur and may change council's position on the viability of council's investment in a facility of this nature. Then we can do that during the fifteen, sixteen long-term plan work. But I just think that to give the community confidence that we are not able to give them, given our financial position, would be unfortunate. So that's, that's my position. It's not because I don't understand the desire for the community to have their pool, it's simply my concern about our fiscal ability to deliver.
Councillor Thompson?
Well, if there is support, I can, I, I will draw up on it.
Councillor?
Oh, look, part of the reason I said I was thinking of bathing deliberately next was because of this item, but I, 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 look, I absolutely endorse what councillor Staines and McTavish are saying with regard to our inability to promise what we don't have and our, and, and the wrong signal in, in implying to a community that we can do something that we, we can't. Having said that, however, I, I'm, I'm just not sure that we're approaching the right way around. Firstly, I think we have an absolutely demonstrable demand in aquatic facilities that is not absolutely demonstrable to me in library facilities in South Dunedin. I think it is entirely possible that we may not spend eight million dollars in library facilities in South Dunedin, and that there may be the ability to redirect that to an area of demonstrable demand. And aquatic facilities for me is an area of demonstrable demand. And for that reason, I'm comfortable with investigation, but I think the nature of that investigation possibly needs to be a little bit different to council doing that investigation. And if I can give you a similar example, there's probably few things more contentious than the notion of asking communities to pay for their health facilities. It's a fundamental government service, and yet we have one of the best examples in central Otago of where that has actually worked for both the DHB and the community, where you had demonstrable demand, clearly inadequate facilities and an inability for a DHB to actually do anything about it. What they did in the end was they said to the community, we have a certain amount of money, it is not going to get you what you want. Are you prepared to overcome your philosophical objection and work with it? And the community said resoundingly, yes. And as a result of that, they've got a facility that is well in advance of whatever could have been provided for them. And more than that, they got community buy-in to that facility, community ownership of that facility. I don't know that we should be looking at a council-owned pool in South Dunedin, for example. I think we should be looking potentially, oh, sorry, Moskew. I think potentially we should be looking at, is there sufficient community drive in the, in, in the Moskew area to form a trust? To which we would clearly provide significant logistical support and to which we would work with around potentially fundraising and making contribution down the track. But if we went that route, you have access to both community funding, you have access to community involvement, you have access potentially to grants, that we will not have access if we go here. Now, if you're just doing it as a way of avoiding our responsibility, well, the grant-giving agency's going to sniff that out really quickly. But I, I, I think that that's not what's happening here. We genuinely don't have the funds. We're not going to have for a very long time. So I think if we're going to put any money into this, it ought to be to facilitate community engagement around a vehicle. And, and let's give them some seed funding. If they can come up with a vehicle, let's look at the possibility of giving that vehicle some seed funding to start this process rather than... And so, so if that is part of what we're looking at, then I'm happy to support it. But I would hope that that is the direction we're going to go, because I don't think we'll get there in the next ten or twelve years if we try and go another route.
Councillor Lord?
Well, I say this with a sort of, sort of a sad hat, because I'm obviously a Moskew person or closest dammers to Swearingen. The problem I have is exactly what Dr Bidrosa's referred to. If we spend money now, do a report just as for aquatic services, I think we'll end up having an irrelevant update before, before we can actually afford to do anything. What councillor Thompson's just said, we got a promise from Bill Feather yesterday that he said they were going to go and work with the community and find out what the community could input and what was required. They were going to look at sites and try and find some sites, and maybe it was possibly already DCC-owned land, or maybe it would be just a suitable site. But my belief is that if we are going to do anything, we're better to perhaps look at some seed money like that so that the community could go and do something because of, I campaigned in the area and people said to me, what about a pool? And I said, well, I can't make any promises for a pool because there simply isn't the money. And I, I think any other combination of trying to wrap it up any other way, we're actually misleading them. And I just, you know, I know that there's people out there strongly advocating for a pool, strongly want a pool, but let's see, as Richard says, what the community can do, because we aren't in a position to do anything different for that.
And... Councillor Van Der Wissens?
I'm very, very happy to hear both councillor Lord and councillor Thompson really bite the bullet on this one. It's been too easy in the past to simply push it back and say, well, yes, we'll get round to it. But we know jolly well that in the foreseeable future, we can't. If we go ahead with the recommendations A and B as they stand, it will invariably be interpreted by some people as a signal that we are going to do it, even if it is in the future. And I don't think that we can really give that signal out. We can't, I can't agree with making an incremental decision by stealth in this way, a hundred grand here for investigation, for further investigation, then a bit more investigation, and by that time, well, it's so well investigated and they've found a bit of land, well, it sort of has to, has to be done. We have done that in the past, and we will be paying a terrible price for that by way of interest costs for a very long time in the future. Councillor Thompson's suggestion, that we let the Moskew community know that we would love for them to have a new pool, that we aren't in a position to be able to fund it, but that we are in a position to be able to facilitate with some seed funding, I suggest, rather than the hundred and five thousand here, that we simply just put up fifteen thousand for a start, and basically have that not to investigate preferred pool options, but basically say that this is available to any Moskew community or trust that they might want to set up to actually do it themselves. If we can empower the people of Moskew to be able to organise the kind of pool that they would like and to organise the substantial funding for it, then I think along that way, along that road, the DCC would be able to supply perhaps land, perhaps some other funding. We could, there's a number of things we can do regarding consents, land spots, whatever, along the way to help make that happen. We all, we're at this table, would love to see this happen for Moskew. As councillor Thompson has said, there is a demonstrable need for further aquatic facilities, but there's an equally demonstrable inability for us to simply go out and buy the thing. So if we can change the recommendation to a much more moderate, I'm suggesting fifteen, it's just a figure that I think would give a trust if people in Moskew were wanting to set one up, and I believe Bill Feather and others are interested in doing that, something to begin with. That is something that I could vote for comfortably, and I would hope that the people of Moskew would be able to then go with that.
Councillor Wiley?
Thank you, your worship. I agree with the last three speakers. It was interesting to look at the last year's annual plan and what came out of it and said it was all about creating a working party. I think days of working parties are long gone. We've got a community board and people of Moskew that are really keen to get this going. So I think giving them some seed capital, or giving them seed money to empower them to actually take this, and essentially give them some snow and let them start the snowball rolling. I think we have to start drawing the line with how to move forward.
Councillor Peet?
Yeah, and there are plenty of precedents to this approach too. With Moana Pool upgrade, I think we saw this in the August last year report, four point five million dollars contribution to that. And Sinclair Pool itself was, was set up with, with community money, and I certainly think this is one clear and obvious pathway for us to take actually. So if we can amend that resolution to show that we have a, a community participation to be, a joint feature, if you like, in terms of not necessarily driving us, but certainly enabling it, I think we will be going the right path.
Councillor Hall?
One suggestion could be that we talk to our neighbouring peer, Ryan Cadogan, that we've just built a new aquatic facility, for somewhere around the six million dollar. We could run off the back of that for our design, if it is reasonable, and cut our costs considerable before we start it, and see if that is up to the scopes that the aquatic centre would be interested in. I think the facility is running about six million dollars, the one they've bought, and it's meant to be a pretty, pretty good setup.
Councillor Hawke?
I just, I mean, there's a subtle difference, I think, in the approach that councillor Thompson is suggesting and the one being advocated by councillors Van Der Wissens and Wiley, in that, from my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Richard, he was suggesting that we take an active role in establishing a, a trust with the community or finding a way with the community to hand over the project, if you like, to them rather than just giving them money and saying to a trust and, and saying, go for it. I think it's a, it's a subtle difference, but...
Yes, but I'm not sure that councillor Van Der Wissens was saying the opposite to that either. I think, I, I'm, I see it as very much a partnership.
I just think that it's important that it is communicated to the Moskew community as such rather than us, and we're not necessarily responsible for having built up a vote in the past, but I think we do have an obligation to smooth that process as much as we can.
Okay, I sense there's a couple of amendments in the wings anyway, so I may be, and, and they may or may not succeed, but I sense there's a, a mood around the table to, to make any investigation slightly different from the way it's expressed here. The investigation that's expressed here is about the options, and I sense that there's a, a mood to actually, look, in the first instance, start a conversation with the, with the Moskew community about how, not what. But we will need to have, I believe, some figures around the cost of the basic twenty-five metre, ten-lane pool. Anyway, we will need something to talk to them about. So it seems to me that there needs to be some preliminary work, even if, but I'm, I'm not sure that, that we have, if we're going to have a conversation with the, with the Moskew community, it, we have to have some facts. We have to know what, that that's going to cost or whatever. So my sense is that we could do that for considerably less than the eighty thousand that has been allowed here. And I'm not even sure that we want to include investigation of car park and whatever at Moana Pool either. So if we, if we're focused on what the future is for Moskew, I suggest that, given the mood around the table, that we should be thinking about what we need to spend in order to facilitate what councillor Wilson referred to as the chicken and egg conversation, we have to kick it off somehow. So I'm, I'm open now, I take it that both councillor Van Der Wissens and councillor McTavish have presumably got some amendments, so I'll just take them, listen to them both and let's see what comes of this, and then see what the mover of this resolution, oh, councillor Peet, so councillor McTavish, you want to...
So I'm, I'm not sure whether my, mine constitutes an amendment. I started off with being an amendment, and I think it may be a reworked motion, but if I took everyone through it, then we can assess whether or not it's an amendment. So the, the changes that I've made to one include cha-changing the preferred Moskew Pool option to a partnership Moskew Pool option. The change to B is Moana, instead of the Moana Pool access constraints, Moana Pool access constraints and enhancement options. And that they, that the results of those, that investigation be reported back to fifteen, sixteen annual plan discussions. And then number two, let the council note that any identified costs are yet to be modeled against the financial strategy, and that council's ability to contribute financially to any aquatic facilities enhancement will be assessed subsequent to this work being completed or being done.
I shouldn't comment, it just unnecessarily complicates and delays the whole thing further. If there is community enthusiasm to go with this, why don't we, why don't we give them the opportunity to go? And it would be far simpler to, to, you know, facilitate a public meeting in Moskew.
Well, hang on, hang on, we're getting, in terms of process, this is...
I don't think that's an amendment at all.
Okay, that's fine. That, that's what we need to ascertain. You're putting that up as...
If it's a subsequent motion, it's a subsequent motion.
Oh, so, okay, so we've laid it on the table as a sequential motion. We've got a motion on the table at the moment, moved by councillor Bezette. You, you indicate that...
I'm hoping that this is amendment, that the council approved funding of thirty-five thousand dollars to be included in the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen annual plan as seed funding for a Moskew Pool trust. The idea behind this is to actually get something moving. The chief executive advises me that twenty-five thousand dollars would be enough to cover the costs of at least getting the legal structure set up for a trust and then give them a bit more to be able to actually do something. bit more to be able to actually do something. And something that I would hope that they would do would be to canvass what they really want, what kind of pool they really do want there, whether it's going to be a lot of lanes of training or whatever.
I don't mean to cut you off, but given that you put it up as an amendment, I have to, well, in the first instance, I'll ask the mover whether-
I mean, this is completely away from what the original, I don't believe that's an amendment, but that's just my ruling.
Well, in light of the wording, I find it difficult to even accept it as an proposed amendment because it is so different. So can I suggest that it remain a sequential motion as well? The motion on the table at the moment, we will, I think the best way to do it is to vote. So all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
It's lost. So, certainly, all those in favour, please.
To a division.
A division.
Is this the first one? Yes.
Aye.
Councilor Bezette.
Aye.
Councilor Hawke.
Hawke.
Hawke. Councilor Hawkins.
No.
Councilor Lord.
Hawke.
Councilor McTavish.
No.
Councilor Noon.
No.
Councilor Pete.
No.
Councilor Staines.
No.
Councilor Thompson.
No.
Councilor Vandervis.
No.
Councilor Wiley.
Yes.
Councilor Wilson.
No.
Me and Carl.
No.
It's lost fourteen. Okay, now, in the order of, I'll be guided by the meeting on this, it's now four past one, lunch was scheduled for one, I suspect that in order to get through these two sequential motions, it could take us half an hour.
We only have one.
We've got one.
Well, then that's not a bad idea either, excellent idea. So is the meeting happy for us to adjourn now for lunch? Councilors McTavish and Vandervis can look at whether there's some common ground that would be acceptable to the council over lunch, and will reconvene at two. That will mean that the non-public part of the meeting will be put off a little further because we were going to go into non-public directly after lunch, but I think we should conclude this. So if we reconvene at two o'clock and finish this item and then go into non-public.
So just a minute, very quick, after that was nine, twenty-nine, Mr Paton at Gardens, trying to deal with that, that means finishes off that section nine, or do you want to come back to that afterwards?
No, we'll do that too.
So finish off section nine.
Yes, we'll finish off section nine after two o'clock, and then we'll go into non-public.
Question, or Councilor Pegg?
Yeah, I understood that the two thousand thirteen, last year, we did get the updated census figures. So what we do have is we have the census night figures, and what you all notice is that they don't, if you go and actually have a look at those census night figures, they, there's a little bit of a difference between population estimates and census, because census has its own set of problems. We rely on estimates, so if you go on page two, there's SNZ population estimates, so it's a bit hard to explain, but the actual census night population is a hundred and twenty thousand, but those census projection, the actual census night assessment is usually lower than what is actually issues with the census night assessment, so they normally elevate it up. So that's why, if you look at these details, you'll see there's a little bit of difference. But we normally, we always rely on the population estimates, so even Stats NZ will take the census night and elevate that higher because of the problems with census nights.
Okay, so we then got those revised.
No, because this was actually, this report was completed in November two thousand and twelve, so we had modified all that purpose. So Stats NZ will come out and move estimates in the near term, they're not being very definitive in terms of dates.
Okay, if there are no further questions, does someone like to move the recommendation on page six R1? Move Councilor Wilson, second, Councilor McTavish, any discussion on that? If you're being unoput of all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Karen.
Okay, thank you. And now I will, we've reached the end of what we planned to do in public, and I will move from the chair, publicly excluded from the following parts of the proceedings as laid out, plus an extra item, which is a code of conduct issue, that'll be a third item, and in addition, I move, including my motion, that Edward Guy and Walter Clark from Rational will be permitted to remain at the meeting because of their knowledge of item six U, and as set out in the agenda paper. Second, Councilor Staines, any discussion? If you're unoput of all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Karen.
Annual plan, Council meeting. What we'll start with this morning is the solid waste fees and charges paper that was, there was a paper handed out on Friday, an extra memo and a budget summary, and we'll deal with that now, and I'll ask Mr Avery to just, just give us the context for this and why we're, we've come back to it.
Thank you, Chief. Morning, everyone. There were two papers handed out on Friday, one was a solid waste activity budget summary sheet, that looks like that, headed up page five dash eighteen A, and there was a separate one, which was a memo on solid waste fees and charges. We thought we'd deal with the solid waste activity budget summary first, this is, recent newspaper articles around landfill charges raised questions around surplus that is generated out of the landfill overall. We thought we'd put together a summary sheet, and I get, I think Carolyn's going to talk to it, that explains the position with respect to the overall solid waste budget, and explains where there is a surplus and how that occurs, and so there's some clarity around that. We skimmed over, we didn't really deal with solid waste at all when Laura was here previously, recognise that we knew we needed to cover that off explicitly, and then we'll propose to deal with the report around solid waste fees and charges, which is really about the fees at the landfills and whether we bite the bullet and put in something like a waiverage that would weigh in and out equally, I mean, that would be a different way of charging. So we'll just deal with going with it first, so there's clarity on that.
So just to be clear, the, one of the reasons this has been brought to us is that there are some options, and we could ask for the fees and charges to be reviewed in the interim, or council could be in the mind to go for the waiverage option, and that's, that's really what we're here to do.
And we're conscious that we sort of, we didn't really deal with the question of the solid waste, the landfill fees at all, and recognise we do need to deal with that because it will come up. So, but we still wanted to start with the noble budget summary position, because it's going to make that position clear, because that might inform part of the debate. So has everyone got that, it's five eighteen A is the page?
Everyone had that page?
All right, three worship. On the top of the page, we've listed all the individual activities that are included within the solid waste budget, because it isn't just the landfills. We've got Green Island landfill, of course, and that's funding, the funding sources for each activity are just on the right-hand column. So in the Green Island landfill, we've got the fees from external customers and internal, so the internal customer is a significant one, and that's for the sludge. We've got the Middle March transfer station, that's funded by general rates and external revenue, same with the Waikato landfill. Then we've got the closed landfills, and we've got a closed, sorry, a landfill aftercare fund, so we're putting away from our revenue that we collect from the landfill abortion to deal with, so that we can pay for our closed landfills. We've got the waste strategy, and that's funded by the Ministry of Devi. Curbside recycling is funded by the recycling rate and some external revenue. We've got refuse collection, which is funded by bag sales. We've got litter collection, which is funded by general rates, and then we've got clean-up days, and that's a combination of general rates and external revenue. So just a summary of the solid waste budget, I'll just run through the right-hand column numbers, because that's the draft budget that you were presented with. So the total of all of those activities I went through is just over eleven million. Expenditure excluding depreciation is nine point seven million, then depreciation is six hundred and eighty-three thousand, so there's a net surplus of nine hundred and eighty-five thousand. We've got capital expenditure, and most of it is at the Green Island landfill, in fact, it might all be, there is five hundred and ninety-two thousand for the fourteen fifteen year. Then we have this general rate contribution, or dividend if you like, towards the general rate, which is nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand, and then we also make loan repayments of two hundred and thirty-six thousand. So the Green Island landfill itself has income of five point nine million, expenditure of four point seven million, and it makes a surplus of one point one million. The rate-funded activities are listed there, so that's the Middle March transfer station, Waikato landfill, the clean-up days, and the litter collection, and they all add to five hundred and six thousand in these draft budgets, so that's, that's what the general rate is funding. Then we have this contribution, which is, I mentioned earlier, is the, like, the dividend from the entire solid waste activity, mostly coming through from Green Island, and so we have a net general rate impact of four hundred and fifty-one thousand, and then we have the curbside recycling rate of two point six eight million. Any questions?
Any, Councilor McTavish.
Just wondering, Carolyn, I assume that there is a budget in this register that goes into like a fund to deal with managing the landfill after closure? Is that rated for as part of this budget?
So that's, so the closed landfill fund, it isn't rated for, but it's funded out of the fees that we're collecting.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Vandervis.
And I was wondering, how long have we been collecting something like a one point one million surplus from landfill? I was aware that this is such a large surplus, but we looked at the intensity at the end of the landfill, right?
I'm sorry, Councilor, I can't answer that off the top of my head, but I can get a history put together for you, if that would help.
Oh, just roughly, has it just been ongoing for two years, or is it a new thing?
Well, no, it's not a new thing, but I can look into that for you if you'd like to.
Thank you. And Chief Executive.
So just, just to point out that the, what you've got in front of you is three years worth of budget, so the surplus for twelve thirteen was seven hundred and eighty thousand last year, or this current year, it's expected one point five million, next year one point one. Just the point of this sheet being to point out that the general rates contribution is that third line from, that second line from the bottom. So although it's a surplus from Green Island, it's paying for other waste-related activities, so the whole waste-related activity is a, is a closed budget if you like. So actually, the surplus, the contribution to waste to, to offset rates is not one point one four eight million, it's four hundred and fifty thousand anticipated in next year's budget, but this year it's eight hundred thousand, but last year it's seven hundred and sixty thousand, so it is reducing what it's worth, but the rates offset is four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, not one point one million.
Okay, and the, this has been the case for some time, that you've got a situation where although the Green Island tip earned a surplus, that is offsetting a loss in some of the other waste areas.
It's offsetting a loss in Middle March, Waikato, the clean-up days, litter collection, the closed landfill fund, and so on. That's right, yes, we can find you back how many years if you like, but for some time.
Thank you very much, it's much clearer than what we did in the ODT.
Councilor Noon.
Thank you, Worship. My question's for Carolyn, I just wondered, we look at the, the actual surplus for twelve thirteen, it's seven eight two, and I just wondered with regards to thirteen fourteen, the current year, and we've got six months under our belt, have we got any idea just where we're tracking? Because I just noticed the, the income difference about eight hundred K is maybe, I don't know whether it's optimistic or not, but I just wondered where we were at with the six months we've got under our belt.
Ian's got the answer. Yeah, through the chair. Just going by the first six months so far, and then doubling that for the full financial year, we're currently looking at a deficit of three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars for landfill operations for Green Island.
When you say deficit, you mean three hundred, it seems you're less than budget.
Yeah, so that, so roughly, that will be twelve hundred, we'd leave eleven hundred and fifty, do you have a guess?
Correct, yeah.
Thank you. Or one point one.
Can I just comment, that's also part of the reason for the projection to fourteen fifteen being reduced, so we're looking at how we're actually tracking.
Thank you. Councilor Wilson.
It's a chicken and egg one here, and I just wonder, I mean, if we, seeing we've got on waste minimisation, we'd expect that the surplus, that, 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 that surplus would be at risk, and whether we should actually be budgeting for a surplus, considering we want them to be doing a lot better at waste minimisation, and so it's a bit like the Waikiki Fund, should we bank it forward or backwards? Because it seems counterintuitive to be promoting a brand-new waste minimisation strategy and all those things, and then budgeting for something to, to not work.
If I can respond, it's certainly a fair comment that every year, this is particularly challenging part of the budget, because there's so many different variables, you know, that affects what we end up. If there was an opportunity to bank it after the fact, that would certainly make a number of things for a lot of people, obviously.
Councilor Thompson.
I just wanted to reinforce what the CEO said around this, because I think that unfortunately, this misleading figures out there, which, and they haven't been helped by the ODT's editorial on Friday, which has used numbers pretty substantially. I did leave a message with the editorial writer with some corrections and a suggestion that I would be happy to discuss them with him, I haven't heard back, but possibly may yet. But I note that it was suggested that a budget of profit of one point five million, which was, was going to be made this year, and that was about one point two percent of rates, and the suggestion therefore being that we weren't actually saving money and expenses, we were simply getting it in additional fees. And what that, of course, has failed to do, and which, and what I think often is not understood by the public, is that profit has to repay loans, it has to pay for capital expenditure, and it has to, and when you take those things out, you have, of course, a substantially bigger. And also, you need to remember, and I think this is the important point the CEO is making, that there is general rate income coming in at the front end. So, you know, you could back that, you have to back that out of the figure to get, to get the, the real actual subsidy from general rates, and, and as the CEO points out, that's about four hundred and fifty thousand. So we just, figures can be used in lots of ways, but that's the real way in this one. Now, you can argue whether it should be four hundred and fifty thousand or nothing, and that's, that's fine, but it's not one point five million.
Councilor Campbell.
Following on from Councilor Kate, Councilor Wilson's comments, if part of what we're doing with waste is intending to alter people's behaviour in a way that we would like them to, and not saving waste and recycling and the like, where are we going with, is recycling actually now breaking even, or is it a cost if we encourage more people to do that, do we end up with more cost? Where does that go? And where do we go with the commercial recycling? Because we haven't got, if we wanted to encourage recycling, we'd want the commercial people to be doing it as well, and I'd like to sort of know, we've got about the economics of whether recycling- And I'd like to sort of know we've got about the economics of where the recycling goes. And if we add in the commercial people, what effect that would be likely to have in a budgetary sense?
Um, through the chair, trying to find an attempt and answer that one. Um, the curbside, uh, recycling pays itself off with the rates, the rates contribution pays for that. There's no other contribution that goes into that that I'm aware of.
Curbside recycling.
Yeah, certainly, so that, that funds that. The, the broader waste minimisation activities we're trying to take in by the department are then funded out of, I suppose this budget line here in terms of where you've got the expenditure. Um, the waste minimisations, although we haven't called it that, um, is talking about doing a lot of other stuff. And, um, funding that out of the existing budget. So there is, there are other actions that are programmed out of this existing budget that'll occur in this next financial year. I'm not sure if that answers your question though.
So if, um, commercial people had a line in their rates, which is curbside recycling, which is what the residential people do, we would expect it to fund curbside recycling for commercial people?
Um, I'm getting into a point, but I don't think we'd ever have a commercial rate because my sense is each of the commercial premises has completely different needs. I think it'd be something that would be arranged potentially collectively, but charged individually to those, those, uh, commercial needs. But maybe, uh, Ian can comment about the way it's being done and investigations, because there has been quite a bit of discussion about, around this.
Yeah, um, just to help you with your, um, thoughts here. There, there are some councils such as Christchurch that do offer the curbside type, um, recycling services through the, um, commercial sector, through the C B D and commercials. Um, again, it's a rates-funded activity, so, um, unfortunately recycling doesn't, um, self-fund itself due to the, um, the high cost of processing the materials. Um, but again, it's obviously, um, achieving that diversion from, from landfill. So part of our, um, waste minimisation management plan strategy this year, we're looking at, um, whether we, um, start to look at the commercial sector and bring those, those people on board as well.
Heard the question, councillor Wilson.
Just, is there any intent, and I don't know if this was raised by the Streath Target Committee Board, um, at all, but is there any intent to, now that there is a depot in Middle March for recycling, to, um, rate the rural areas who can use that, that facility? In order to encourage them to use it rather than if they're paying something, they will use it?
Um, there's probably a, a conversation I was going to come to the Committee Board was this year.
Very good. Well, it would, it has, it has to be going out for now, I would have thought in, in the annual plan to be included, to get those submissions. Otherwise they can't, you can't do it after the plan goes out.
Just to be clear, there is no proposal in this fourteen fifteen year draft and a plan to rate for curbside collection in the rural areas at the moment. So that's, the, the point of race is valid, there is no provision at the moment. And I'm not sure whether we'd be able to get that in now or not, but at the moment, so I'm assuming it's just to be funded out of the, that to be funded out of the general solid waste and budget.
Councillor Hawkins.
Thanks, mine's a similar question to councillor Cowan's, but from a slightly different perspective. Our spatial plan says that we want to have a, a compact city and that infers a degree of, of reurbanisation, which I personally am in favour of. But what makes me uneasy about that is currently, um, there is no recycling option for residents who live in our commercial districts. And, um, I wonder whether that work that is being done is taking into account residential demand and potential, the growth of residential demand for those services that are offered in the commercial quote-unquote, uh, district.
Yeah, we're, we're currently working with the, um, planning department with the, um, developments going on in the warehouse precinct. We're looking at trialing some, um, styles of public, of, but public place recycling and whether, um, there's an influx of, um, urban, urban living people there. How we can manage those properties as well, but then expanding to the sectors of the city as well.
Just to be clear, um, also in the waste management minimisation thing, there is another priority in terms of, or investigation, is the work around research in the C B D. So, um, my observation is if we wanted the work done fast, we should give Ian some resource to do it.
Any further questions? Councillor Wood.
Um, I have not read all through this waste adoption, but my question is surely, uh, just to get off, touch slightly, the, the charges that people are complaining about at the moment. I would think it was a wee bit unnecessary. I don't mind, look, I've got no problem with making a profit as it's explained, it effectively means the user's paying, I don't have no problem with that. And the size of that profit doesn't concern me at all. What I wonder though is, is there not some way we can have a wee bit of discretion at the gate so that someone doesn't go in and say, I've got a, three-year-haul here at meter trailer, and I've got two bags of grass and I'm paying three backs. Can we not just have a bit of discretion and common sense involved so that, you know?
Um, so I want to move on to the memo because that's what, um, councillor identified. It is, does raise that question of, um, either, there's two proposals, we, we fine the current, uh, fees at the landfill. So we, we provide for half-loads and other things, try and provide that discretion. Um, and the other option should have been raised as a question last year by the previous councillors around whether installing a weigh bridge, um, so people get weighed in and weighed out and then pay for their, uh, rubbish by weight is a better option. And so we've covered that off in here, so that's the question. And we can report back on both those options and find a detail, um, to the next, I think the next Infrastructure Services Committee, which will be in time to get them finalised before the draft and the plan goes out. So that's the purpose of the memo itself.
Well, can I just follow up on, um, councillor Lord's question then? I could tell you that the complications around a weigh bridge, and I think you referenced them here, is the difficulty you have when someone has half a trailer load of recyclables or green waste or something like that and half a load of rubbish. And the rubbish may be lighter than the, the, the stuff that they're paying less for. And so is, is that complication whereby you have to figure out a way of getting rid of the green waste before you weigh the rest of it?
Um, I, I think there's a, there's a, a couple of things. Um, the, not all of the green waste can actually be composted. Uh, I think that's a, a common misconception, so roughly fifty percent ends up in landfill anyway. Um, either sort of things that think it won't compost or, or would create a wrong mix in the compost. Um, if I may just sort of make an observation relative to councillor Lord's, um, question. The way that the landfill charging currently works and, and potentially it is, it is overly simplistic, is that we do split the amount that we need to recover over the number of vehicles based on an average weight. So that does mean if we do want to create a charge for a half-load or a wall sack or whatever else it might be, it does mean that on the flip side, we will need to increase the charges for a, a properly laden, a fully laden load. So it isn't just a case of take the current charge and charge half of it. We would actually have to relook at both sides of the equation to make sure that we did still recover the total amount, assuming that is the amount that the council is looking for us to recover.
Thank you, councillor Makers.
Um, assuming that we can just have the discretion to say, oh, that's a half-load, we're going to charge a half for that. Given that we're running a bit of a surplus on this anyway, couldn't we just keep the charges the same and actually, um, just do that? Given that there wouldn't be that many half-loads coming through and.
Um, our, our experience is that the, whether, whether, whether booth operators have been using a lot of discretion, uh, or have, before we sort of realised how big a problem was creating, um, is that the number of loads they were charging the full load were for, was, is relatively limited, they were using a lot of discretion on a lot of them. The other thing that is worth considering is from the data we've seen, different operators, um, item the same load and come up with a different target. So in terms of consistency as to whether that's half a load or it's a bit more green and a bit more, um, we do end up with the potential that you could drive up with identical loads on different days and get charged different amounts. Now there is a certain amount we can do by, for example, having a charge for a wall sack or a weaving or some of the things that are more common. Um, but we do end up in a situation where we haven't got some clear guidance, even if that guidance allows for a much wider range of scenarios than we do at the moment. Then we could end up with quite a high degree of inconsistency. And that also then does potentially put booth operators into a difficult situation where they're going, well, hang on, I dropped up yesterday with the same load or last week with the same load and they charged me a different amount. Um, so that's, that's the, the flip side. Um, but, but certainly we could look at a, a wall sack charge and a variety of other intermediate charges.
Given that it's always going to be a blunt instrument and I don't think anybody really expects to pay a precise amount that they bring in on their trailer. Um, I personally have never fronted up anything other than an overloaded trailer because that's the only way to get real value. But, um, the, the, uh, the, the half-trailer option, which obviously for a lot of people is, is, is what they want to do, whether it's a quarter or a five-eighths. I think most people would actually accept a half charge for a half trailer, it would be simple. Um, and would there be any other costs involved in, in doing that? I mean, if you just had, as you say, not precise, but.
It, it would ultimately mean, if, if we did that without changing the other charges, it would mean that we wouldn't recover the, the surplus that we're anticipating.
So it would gobble up the whole of the surplus as you're thinking?
Not necessarily all of it, um, we'd have to go away and do some number crunching on that, but, but certainly we wouldn't meet the budget targets that we've got within the plan.
Okay, if we were to do that, not change the fees, but just bring in the half-load, could we do that on like a trial basis for six months or a year and just see how that panned out?
Well, yes, we could, um, the issue would be the, um, implications of revenue targets, but if you wanted to trial, that, that is always an option, yeah.
Thank you. Councillor Cowan.
It seems to me to be a whole lot of things in the middle of this. One of them is that my sense is volume is the way people think of rubbish and any intent to start weighing it or confuse people. Just like when you get on aircraft, you know, what they're charging in the way of getting on the aircraft and it's straightforward. Um, you can argue about if it's straightforward. Volume is how we've been used to, you know, that bag, and if you can put heavy things in that bag, good luck to you, sort of thing. The second thing is the green waste. I think considering even people with old and tired eyes can go to a lot of trouble to put on the back of a piece of plastic and decide whether it's a recycled piece of plastic. You could also tell people what sort of green waste wasn't appropriate because you put one flex leaf, as I understand it, on the top of three tonnes of green waste and all of a sudden it's contaminated and it just turns into landfill. So if flex is one of the things, what are the others? Because people would separate out contaminated and, and evil green waste from the other green waste if, if you ask them to, I think. And my last sort of question is, could you, if we're clearer about half and full and one rubbish bag and one trailer and one boot or whatever, you could put a picture like they do in Japanese restaurants of what you mean and you could put a CCTV camera up for a period of time so as that the operator could later be, it could be discussed with them, the difference between what they were charging and what they weren't. I know my kids send different people in because they know that it's not just the load that changes, the person who presents the load can make a difference to what they're charged.
Um, just to reply, the, um, there are signs up there in the green waste area for segregating those sorts of materials. A lot of public choose to ignore that, so we end up with even rubbish and other things mixed in with the, the green waste as well. An example that we just, um, identified last week when we were out observing it. So, um, and putting CCTVs out there and, and the, the booth operators watching it sort of thing. Um, it makes it a bit hard to actually do two or three things at once when that vehicle's coming in and, and trying to charge for them as well. So with our current contract, with our current contract and the number of staff we have there, um, that, that means more people requirement. So again, that will start to put costs up as well.
Uh, what, what I was suggesting was you could put something that showed the load up there so as that later somebody could just back from the office, flick through and say, this operator doesn't seem to have quite got the idea that we had intended them to of the amounts. And so you could say, you know, on Saturday morning when you're on duty, it seemed to me that you weren't deciding about a trailer. Just in an education phase at the beginning, in case they get a bit confused about how much of how much.
Um, just one other comment, and I'd, I'd take your point in terms of, um, domestic users of the landfill being used to, um, paying by proxy volume. Um, but our, um, commercial customers all pay by weight already.
Councillor Benson Pope.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's not hard when you look at the memo and that's essentially what we've been discussing really, to see in that third paragraph in the centre, the philosophy of the average load cost. It's not hard to see why people are grumpy about what they're paying. And nor is that philosophy, in my view, incentivised waste minimisation. Um, as councillor Vanderby said, you're better to take the overloaded trailer and you get better values. So I think the obvious, um, pathway forward for me is to install a weigh bridge. And if we have the capacity and the current operational fund and the funding is there, because that's what we've been talking about, at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it could be done outside of the current annual plan discussion. And people would be paying for what they actually take to the place. I don't think there's any issue with having a different regime by weight for different loads. Um, all recyclable green waste, maxed or, or waste, or landfill, because that's what other people have done successfully around the country. And I can't imagine that too many people would have resistance to paying by weight for whatever it is they're taking. And so I'm wondering if we could naturally move to a, to a, um, motion to that effect to authorise or direct installation of a weigh bridge in the current, current year.
Okay, can I suggest you start framing up a, a motion? And I've got several more speakers, can I just suggest that you stick to, the, the next speaker stick to questions while that motion's being, um, framed? So councillor Hawkins.
Yeah, thank you. Um, you mentioned that we're tracking down the three hundred and fifty thousand-ish of the thirteen fourteen budget. And I wonder how much, is it, if it's possible, how much of that, that can we pin on discretionary charges at the toll booth? And now that that has been, because that's, and that's been adjusted for it seems in the fourteen fifteen budget. But I wonder, now that that has been corrected, at least under the current regime, however long that stands, and whether we can't expect that to change in the fourteen fifteen year.
So a, a large chunk is down to the, um, the budgets and the, um, into the, the current year's position, um, is down to that, that's the expression we're charging. Um, one thing we didn't mention earlier is in terms of next year's budgets, that does also take into account the impact of the Tahuna incinerator and not taking us over to London. So that's also a, a big chunk. Um, we are now tracking on a day-by-day basis what the average per tonne recovery is as it goes through the booth. So we can see what the, what the impact, um, is around the, the compensation that we've had. And then the, the re-guidance to put a little bit more discretion back in. Um, it hasn't yet stabilised to a number that we would be confident is, is one that we can, we can plan on. It's certainly gone up from where it had been at its low point. Um, it did peak, it's come back down a wee bit now, so we're really just watching to wait, wait and let that run for long enough.
When will, when will you be comfortable with that figure, do you think?
Well, unfortunately it's a, it's sort of a seasonality type thing, um, that the landfill experiences. So ideally it really takes twelve months to see the full seasons to be able to actually let it happen and say, this is where the charges should be, sort of thing, so.
Councillor Mizik.
Uh, thank you, um, I'm sort of thinking on the same lines as councillor Benson Pope. And, um, just looking at the figures with regards to a second weigh bridge, does it mean, um, I know there's a commercial weigh bridge out there, but if we, if, if we go to a weigh bridge, does it mean that we have to have two weigh bridges for, yeah, so as well as the commercial one? And, and, and if that's the case, is the hundred and fifty thousand for two weigh bridges or just one?
Uh, it's just one, so we would put all, all the vehicles would come in on one and all the vehicles would go out on the other. So the commercial weigh bridge would be utilised for both domestic as well.
So in essence, just one weigh bridge is needed?
One, one additional one.
One additional weigh bridge, okay. Uh, it seems to me that that is the way to go because, uh,
It seems to me that that is the way to go because the problem that I think we have is we have booth operators who are trying to differentiate between a half load or a quarter load and a full load. You've got to take that debate away from, 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 from the start so that it's quite clear. Whoever comes in has got a load and that's your, that's the weight and that's what you pay. So if we can put a system in that in some ways mitigates the, the situation that exists at the moment with the operators, the booth operators debating the issue with, with our clients or our customers, then that is the way to go.
councillor Thompson. councillor Wilson.
I, I'm intrigued by the debate and all the discussion and questions to date, but what, you said at the end earlier about there being clear signs up at the landfill. One, I, I come from a, my, see, maybe I'm wrong, that people are very unaware about rubbish. And if we put more money into education, that they'd sort it on their trailer before they put it on their trailer rather than the willingness to sort it at the tip, with all respect, isn't the place to do it. So I'm just wondering, as an alternative option, has there been any consideration for, and, and what you do for education of people about rubbish? And it has changed markedly in the last five years, I think. And each, are, are you doing, or is there more? The, the real question is, is, would it be better to invest a, a percentage of that 150,000 in education of people in ongoing program that may get a much better end result of waste shortage?
I'm not sure that the, the two are mutually exclusive. I, I think you're probably right, there is more that we could do. I think if we put the weighbridge in, we still want to be able to separate out the green waste. So we still need to make sure that people do understand that green waste with a significant amount of flax in it is going to have to go to landfill. So therefore please separate it out beforehand. So I'm not sure it isn't an either or. But I do take your point, it's probably more that we could do to educate people prior to arriving at the landfill.
And the reason I'm asking that question is because I don't know where weight actually is a measure of landfill charges. I mean, I appreciate it is, it's quantum at the moment. I mean, a wet foliage may be more recyclable than dry gosh, bit of asbestos dust that we don't even know that might be going in there. So I mean, I'm, I'm just, I think it's a very blunt instrument and it's not taking us an extra year where we want to go, understanding by streams.
We would certainly be envisaging that where somebody brings a load that is composed of green waste, they would be being charged a lower per ton weight than for, for landfill. I think though that getting into a finer granularity based on what the content of the load is. In reality, people largely do bring mixed loads of, you know, lumps of concrete, bits of wood and all manner of things. And without spending a lot of time thinking about it, I find it difficult to imagine that people will separate to a great enough degree that we could, others at a very coarse level, separate out on, on what the content of the load is.
councillor Stevens.
It seems to me that we've all become hyper sensitised because of a change in discretion, which in some cases, the person who's using, who now does not use discretion is actually trying to make it an issue, like try to charge for a trailer that has nothing in it, which we heard about the other day. Is it, is it possible to just not be so emotive? And if a customer rocks up to the booth and says, I think that's too much. The operator says, well, would you like to go across the weighbridge? So that most people aren't perfectly happy. They pull up, I've never, I've noticed variation in charges, but I've never complained. I pay what the person asked me to pay. But if there's someone who is unhappy and debates with the operator, the operator could surely say, well, if you'd like to be charged differently, would you like to go across the weighbridge and we'll charge you according to your weight? Rather than putting, like, if we put in a weighbridge, I've been out there plenty of times and I've seen trucks queued up to go across the weighbridge. So I assume we could be in a position where we need a second booth, second operator, more charges again. If we're making, so my question really is, are we overreacting? And are there other solutions that might be possible to even out some of what I assume is ill thought out discretion? Rather than investing a lot of capital and, and more operating costs?
I think, I think we need to, to consider the implications. It's an interesting concept. At a simplistic level, I very much doubt anybody is ever going to ask to go over the weighbridge because they think they've been undercharged. So inevitably, it will only ever favour those people who feel that they're being overcharged, which again brings in the question of the, the averaging. But I would need to think about it a little bit more before we get a definitive answer.
I've got just another question. So you, you currently have a means of roughly estimating what weight is going through or what, what amount of revenue should be going through that booth? And is, is that free?
We do an annual audit and we weigh a number of vehicles and that's how we get the average weight. And then that average weight, and, and we know how many vehicles go through the booth of different types. So we use those two figures to work out what the, what the charge needs to be to split the cost by the number of vehicles by the average weight.
So in a sense, the person in the booth is like the person behind the till in the shop. They can choose to give you a discount or not give you a discount and they can do that on a, against a set of guidelines or they can do it to favour their mates or anybody else. So what is the training rating that trains the booth operators to understand firstly what their discretion is? What they can and can't do. And secondly, by observation, either through CCTV or some other means, auditing whether or not they are, they understand and are using those discretion rules even handed out. Is, is that done?
I think it's fair to say until this most recent sort of issue, we were anticipating that those loads, that the loads would be charged strictly in accordance. So, so the amount of discretion we were, we were expecting was extremely limited. And as a consequence of that, I don't think there has been a huge amount of guidance around what is appropriate and isn't appropriate. Following the, the publicity issues pre-Christmas, we've then given some guidance about, you know, if you've got some booth full sack, how do you deal with that for some of the difficulties? And what we're, what we're able to do is to track on a day by day basis what the average dollars per tonne. So how that equation is working on a day by day basis. And from that, we're starting to see some patterns around who's on shift, those sorts of things. So that gives us a bit more of a basis to start having that dialogue going forward. And, and potentially putting in place some more of the, the things that you're talking about. But up until this point, there hasn't been a clear intent that there would be significant amounts of discretion applied. So consequently, no training to, to, to follow that. But certainly if we were to get around that route, we would need to relook at the charging regime and how we appropriately put guidance in, whether that through photographs or other sorts of things.
So one last question. In your opinion, this is a bit naughty, but in your opinion, is it really worth the investment of a weighbridge? Or is it able to be addressed with a bit more training, a bit more audit? And, and therefore not involve us in more capital work? So, you know, clearly every time the ADT publishes a situation where someone has clearly, according to what's been reported, been roared it. Is it possible to stop those by, by better training, better audit, rather than going to the extreme of weighbridges, weighing everything in, weighing everything out? And at the end of the day, how do you determine whether a load is green waste or not green waste? And whether people have got stuff that's landfill material or even worse than landfill material, stuff that should be treated specially? It's still going to be hidden in the load. You're still not going to know it's there.
We've just had a very quick confer. Putting it simplistically, if the council wants security around the budget targets, a weighbridge is the way to go. And I guess it depends on, on what your particular priorities are. There is still an element of discretion as to whether or not you are going to charge it as green waste or, or, or solid waste. But it is, it is by far the most secure way to make sure that you hit your budget targets and are not subject to high degrees of, of influence around why, why you've chosen that load for me and, and, you know, my 16 year old rocked up yesterday, got charged all, or whatever else the variance might be that have been implied. So, so yeah, if you want security around, around the budget target, a weighbridge would be the way to go, but there's a cost to that.
Just, you're also entirely right. But I suppose if, if we keep with the fee structure, then we would be proposing to have a more refined grading of fees, so half loads and things. And do their training audit and sort of thing. So it wouldn't just be a current existing system. It would need to be changed in terms of those, a greater range of fees and then a lot more training with the booth operators around. But both have an element of discretion because at the end of the day, you've got someone who's sitting in the booth assessing what's coming across as to if it's going to be weighed, as to what's the, the rate per tonne that's going to be charged for that, as opposed to considering whether it's a half trailer or a quarter or whatever else. There's always an element there.
councillor Noon.
Thank you, worship. I've got two questions and it's just around what we've got in trying to better utilise the, the existing weighbridge. So if we were to go down the path of using the weighbridge for our domestic customers, I just wondered whether a reconfiguration of the roading layout could achieve better efficiency of the existing weighbridge? Is that possible to use the existing weighbridge for the existing commercial users plus domestic if there was a reconfiguration of the roading layout? Second question is, if we go down the weighbridge option for domestic customers, would the configuration of the roading layout allow them to go past the recycling depot before they get to the weighbridge?
In answer to the first part of the question, the, the volume of, of traffic that would need to go in does mean we need one in and one out because otherwise people would be waiting considerable amounts of time to, to be able to move. In terms of configuration, they'd still be able to go past and drop off the recycling first.
With a considerable, sorry, worship, with a considerable delay in time, are we talking midday on a Saturday where there would be a time lag of, I don't know, 10 minutes, 15 minutes or whatever? Or are we talking about, you know, four or five hours per day where you'll be waiting 10 or 15 minutes? I just want to understand how much delay people would have to put up with.
That's an awkward one to determine at the moment because I mean, we do, transport loads are very sporadic. And that's why having the two, two bridges working in series, you go in one bridge and you come out the other bridge would be the way we would fit them in. And that would also allow us minimal civil work to, to basically put the first weighbridge where the current domestic people enter the booth.
Sorry, worship, I have a question about delays with the current operation. I mean, how much delay is the, at the moment, the commercial users at the sort of peak times of, of the week, the day?
I don't know that, sorry.
councillor McTash.
Well, just two questions. The first, following on from councillor Stevens' queries. The weighbridge, the weighing weight based option and the volume based option. To me, I don't think operationally they would work too well, right? We'd need, we'd need to choose one or the other. Otherwise you can have a trailer that comes in which is overloaded with polystyrene, which could be under one regime charged a lot and then under the other it would be charged nothing. So, so a mixed regime is, is, it would be difficult to administer.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, there, there may be some exceptions. So for example, we may want to leave it such, if somebody is coming in with one bag, same as currently, they don't need to go on the weighbridge, we're still charging $2.10. But, and, and likewise, you may get to a point where you do have to have some sort of minimum load charge simply because there'll be a point below which the, the weighbridge can't, can't be accurate. But yes, in a general sense, we either need to plumb for a way of doing properly by volume or, or weight.
And if we did go for the weighbridge option, for that very reason, it doesn't eliminate problems at Waiquity or Middlemarch because there would still need to be some proxy.
Yeah, we, we would still need a charging regime for those, but what we would have is a mechanism to get far better data around what average loads weigh and therefore what an average car should be charged and, and those sorts of things.
And my final question, Laurie, you, you say that if, if council is focused on meeting budget targets, the weighbridge option is the way to go. That's probably one of three different drivers in council. One is around meeting budget targets, one is around equity or safe equity. And the third is around waste minimisation and encouraging councillor Wilson's points around splitting of materials and that sort of thing. If council was wanting to achieve all three of those outcomes, would your recommendation, recommendation still remain the weighbridge or, or would it change?
So in terms of equity, the weighbridge being far less under discretion, discretion does mean that everybody is treated equally. Whether that equates to equity in, in the way that the council would intend it is questionable. In terms of waste minimisation targets? Again, it, it's a difficult one to answer in using your example with the polystyrene. Is a large volume of porous polystyrene better or worse than a small volume of something different? And I think you, you start to get into a very complex regime of which waste is better or worse than which other waste. If, if you really truly want to, to balance those things, that would properly end up with a system that is extremely difficult to actually operate.
councillor Kelly.
I don't see in here, and perhaps I'm just being blind a bit, the land transfer station, whatever it's called, that we would usually use in the north end down by the...
That's a private operation.
Oh, right. Okay. So it wouldn't be affected totally anyway. And that presumably adds a whole different thing because north end users would often use that. But now they'd be able to sort of choose to have a...
The, sorry, the experience over quite a hundred years is that if council changes its charging regime, our competitor has a place for their charges and invariably moves as well.
But unless they've got $150,000 in their fridge to do a weighbridge for me, I'd be, they can't actually do a comparable sort of...
We don't know what, yeah, but that would be the case. They'd have to, if we started charging by weight, they may still continue to charge the way that they currently do, which is by, by volume.
And we just, the council then charges them to shift whatever they're doing back in over there, do they have it?
They're very meaningful.
Oh, right. That's why this flex issue is a bit strange because I don't think the signs match with whatever.
They are a completely different operator and related to us.
Right. councillor Benson Pope, you have. It's going to, somewhere, it's going to appear. There's the motion. Is there a second for that? councillor Noon, second.
Question on that, worship.
Sorry?
Question on that?
Yes.
Just wondering where this proposed budget come from?
My perfect answer, the memo notes that through reprioritisation of the, of the current year's capital programme and the solid waste. So in terms of the green on landfills, I understand, and that's correct. So we'd reprioritise in this current financial year.
So if that's the intention, perhaps that needs to be articulated in the motion?
Because at a certain broad sense of the way, which there are two board options. One is to do it out of this current financial year and have it in place by 1st of July. The second is to consider this funded out of the 14, 15 year and have that as proposal for consultation, which would push it out another six months, seven months. But under that proposal, what was covered off in the memos, if you want to put a weighbridge in, we do have the capacity by reprioritising in this year to do it at this financial year and get it in place.
Can I speak to my... Certainly. Well, I'd have been of a mind to make a request or make a decision now, but given the recommendation in the memo, what's in the motion gives us the capacity to have a detailed debate about the exact ramifications, the source of the funding, the timing, what the reprioritisation might mean to any other, and that could happen more easily at the normal infrastructure services meeting and still achieve the goal of getting a waybridge in place and allowing a bit more time to look at the charging regime that would be associated with that, which would be consulted on on the plan so people wouldn't know what's going on. And obviously in the interim, there'd have to be a continuation of the presumed status quo until that fee structure were approved. So, yeah, I think this gives the capacity for that, for a sense of consideration to happen, but to actually make progress as is indicated in the memo in the current financial year rather than waiting for what I think is quite an unsatisfactory situation. Come back to what is detailed in the memo, the philosophy of an average load is absolutely destined to irritate people because they don't understand why they're paying what they are for what they haven't got on the trailer.
councillor Wilson.
Can I ask a question? I think it's going to be easier to deal with this. I understand where this motion's intent is, but what we would be consulting on is then, am I correct, the charging regime, not that we're going to change the methodology of changing, of charging? Because if we put a waybridge in, we are committed to doing it then by weight and we wouldn't be consulting on that at all under this motion.
That's correct. Under this motion, you'd be making a decision to put the waybridge in and then the consultation would be around the fee structure for the waybridge.
Although bearing in mind you'd make a decision at infrastructure looks, not today. So at infrastructure looks, you could still vote to not go ahead with the waybridge.
Yeah, and so that meeting would be the eleventh of February, which would need to do in time to get, if we're going to, if you're going to proceed with that, to then get something into the drafting plan around that fee structure. It won't change the budget, there's no budget implications, we could go for the waybridge and fees is, or a revised fee schedule is neutral in terms of the budget, but it is that comment you'd have to make.
councillor Cowan.
If there's a hundred and fifty thousand that can be reprioritised from that budget, then there's a hundred and fifty thousand that should go back into the annual plan process and see what else we might want to do with it instead of reprioritising it in that way, seems to me. Is, if that money is able to be found from somewhere, such as that you can say confidently that there are no budget implications, then it's a hundred and fifty thousand in there that could be used for something else if we didn't use it for a waybridge?
The way that we prioritize is to defer capital expenditure which otherwise would have occurred in this financial year and defer that to next financial year. There's not a hundred and fifty thousand that is spare in that sense, it's just a deferral of capital expenditure which we can tweak over time.
So we can defer it, so that means we could use it for something else and use something else later for that in another year.
councillor Noon.
Thank you, worship. Speaking to the motion, to me, the move of the motion indicated the frustration out there, I've had the same feedback and probably like all of us around the table, but moving towards a weighing system clearly is more equitable, fair and reasonable. These are the sort of tests that as a local government we need to consider as we make our decisions. Over the years, I've visited the Christchurch, one of the Christchurch landfills, which has a way-in, way-out system for the domestic customers. It's very slick, very simple to implement. I think that if we were to go down that path, I think it takes that guesswork away from the staff at the booth. And also I think the customers will have greater faith in council providing a service that, once again, comes back to that fear and reasonable, they won't mind paying what they're actually delivering by way of weight.
councillor Bezic.
I really agree with you, and you said what it does for the council, it gives us a budget certainty, we know what we're going to have for our, for the improvement in our annual plan. The problem certainly isn't going to get any better. The booth operators, I think there are problems associated with that because there's always the debate of whether the trailer's half full or whatever. And I think with a waybridge, the number of clients would feel that they will all be treated equally and I think that's really the nub of the issue, so I would support this.
councillor McTash.
Thank you, worship. I'm not convinced that this is actually going to solve any problems. I think that all it's going to do is ensure that there are winners and losers. Polystyrene manufacturers will be really stoked and those who go through a whole load of heavy stuff would probably be up in arms about it. And, I mean, you know, people talk about illegal dumping, it may well be that all this motion does is ensure that we get a whole load of illegal dumping of heavy items. So I'm not convinced that this is the approach that is going to win us and assist them that really works. It possibly eliminates a little bit of the guesswork from the equation, but it seems to me an expensive way to do that in the absence of a full assessment of what the implications of introduction of a waybridge have been in other centres. I also think it doesn't actually deal with one of the main complaints that I've been getting as a councillor, which is that people don't understand why they have to pay for their green waste. This doesn't change that, it simply means that they'll be charged under a slightly different regime for their green waste. I would prefer to see an, and perhaps it could be considered as part of the report, something that looked into the possibility, or looked into the possibilities that councillor Wilson raised around hips and better articulated information for people about what green waste, how green waste could be accepted more cheaply, the state that it would need to be in, those sorts of things, so that those people who are genuinely tuning up with green waste that can be composted, that is actually a resource for us, can be treated a little bit more fairly. So, I mean, I would support this motion, I'm not convinced that it's actually going to win us much, but if it means that we get a report considering it in more detail for us to make a decision at a later date, then I'm comfortable doing that.
councillor Wilson.
I'm not particularly in a bodice suggestion because I don't know that it is an investment to anything but making us continue down a line that doesn't actually improve the city situation waste stream. Weight is not a measure of how bad or bad waste that each product will be and it certainly is unfair to penalise someone who has stored their rubbish in order to get a whole trailer load and it's got wet and therefore they're paying for the water in it. It just doesn't seem, it's a solution to solve a really simple problem, which I think can be dealt with much better by education and by giving a process where people can take a photo of their rubbish if they're unfair about it and come and complain to us directly. I, it's a really expensive investment and a process that we'll keep on going down that track of saying weight is a measure of waste, which it should never be, and it just doesn't seem to me to tick any box of taking us to a place we want to be. We've got this scheme of investment to save, this is an investment to commit and it doesn't seem right to me. So I'm not going to be voting for it. I would like to see us be getting a report that looks at how we can look at the best way to deal with the problems and issues, if there really are problems and issues. And I don't think this is the way that we're going to get there, so I might be supporting this motion.
councillor Pete.
Thank you, yeah. It just feels like we're kind of trying to micromanage the waste streams when, for me anyway, I don't know enough about it yet. I certainly don't know enough about whether weight is a bigger deal than volume and I'd be interested to hear the comment on that question because although I could see that this would lead us to at least some clarity or certainty for people using Green Island landfill, I myself use Fry Street Transfer Station and find that they operate by volume, whether you've got a Wolfset full of green stuff or you've got a trailer or you've got a boot or you've got this or that. And I tell, I'm just a bit unclear on whether this is going to deliver. I mean, I take it from councillor Noon, I mean, that Christchurch people are happy enough with that and you do get certainty if you have by a weight process anyway, but I still am not really convinced about whether the volume is another way to approach this. It may be better, but maybe, Laura, if you could give us an idea about that, that would be helpful.
I think as best I can, in a general sense, I think there is a debate between weight versus volume, but just to give an indication, all of the things like the waste levy is calculated on weight, so in terms of how landfill relates to other factors and the waste levy being a good one, that's all calculated based on weight, the amount of money we get back is based on the amount of weight that goes in the volume.
councillor Stans.
I tend to think a waybridge is an overreaction and may well result in the wrong outcomes. I'm probably not typical, but you never know. I tend to try to make sure that I sort my waste before I load it so that I can put it in the right place. I always tell the booth operator, I've got about half a load of green waste and the rest is going to landfill, these sorts of things. But if we go for straight weight, unless there's also an observer who's assessing what's in the trailer, then the charge is regardless. So whether it be a complete load of green waste, which is potentially a resource for us, or a complete load of noxious material going to landfill, the charge is the same. So there is no incentive then for anybody to firstly make sure their load is nicely sorted, secondly, to try and make sure that they, when they're dumping it, they put it in the right place because if I'm just paying so much per kilo, why not, don't I just rock up to landfill and dump the whole lot in there? So I think there's a bit more complexity in this. If we were going to have another report, I think it's got to look at both sides of the equation. What would need to be done to be more certain of the fairness of a by-volume system and how would that be managed? And secondly, if we're going to go the waybridge way, how are we going to use the waybridge to ensure that we still are sending the right messages in sorting our recyclables or our reusables out rather than just paying a fee and saying, well, it's just a dollar fee, I'll just dump it? So I'm not very happy with this resolution.
Can I just clarify, picking up on councillor Stans' points, I recall you mentioned before that there would be a differential between complete waste and complete green waste, so there'd be a different fee.
So, yeah, just to be clear, one, anything that can go to recycling, you would be able to go to the recycling and drop that first, so you wouldn't pay for that over the waybridge. And secondly, we would be proposing that, taking a simple example, if a load is completely green waste, you would be charged at a lower per tonne rate than if it was a full load of waste. And we would assume that that same thing would be, if the load is fifty percent green waste, albeit there is a judgment there, then that would be charged at a lower rate per tonne than if it was a thirty percent green waste and the rest of it, rubbish per tonne load. It does still have the anomalies that somebody with a load of polystyrene versus somebody with a load of wet grass, the weights would vary so much that they would, they would cancel it out, but it was the per tonne rate.
Surely the next argument though is whether the assessment of what's in my load is fair or unfair. So we've still got a booth operator making the assessment, because if I've got a whole lot of stuff that I want to dump, I can bury it in the well of my trailer, cover it all in green waste so no one can see it and say it's a hundred percent green waste. It seems to me that if you're going to have an assessment, it comes down to whether you train the operators to be able to assess consistently or not.
One of the reasons that we do have to charge for green waste and the rates for green waste are not as low as people perceive they should be is for exactly that reason, that we do know that on average, a load of green waste is not entirely a load of green waste. And I guess the other part, that at the moment, we are also subject, certainly when the operators were applying discretion, there was a subjectivity around how big the load was. This takes that subjectivity out, but you are still left with the fact that some people might be as honest as yourself and others may declare that it's entirely green waste when there's a tonne bricks bottom. But the weight factor would still mean that what looked like a light pile of branches with bricks underneath, they would still suddenly get, they'd still at least get charged for the weight of the bricks even not at, if not at the right rate. And I guess if there was a huge inconsistency between the weight and what they declared, you know, oh, it's their branches and it weighs four tonnes, the booth operator might want to go and just care. But there is, there will always be an element where somebody who doesn't want to declare honestly will be able to find some level of loophole, but it does reduce the cycle of loophole that they would have.
councillor Thompson.
I probably came into this debate pretty much along councillor Benson-Pope's line, I'm not quite so sure now. I will, I will vote for this, just to take it through to the next stage, but one of the things that might assist me would be to understand what the relative income is between commercial and residential users because I'm not sure just how much of the problem by volume or by weight is currently being accounted for by weight and, you know, whether it's twenty-five percent or seventy-five percent. What, you may have a rough idea.
I, I'm, it's part of the answer, but we could certainly cover off the rest if...
I think that would be useful, that too, come on.
We aim on the commercial side for a hundred and thirty dollars per tonne recovery and that's the same figure that we use on the average load for, so we're trying to aim for the same per weight price. So all of our commercials done by weight already, so we recover that comfortably.
No, I understand that. What I'm just, what I'm really asking is of that roughly six million dollar income at Green Island, how much of that is currently coming from commercial users roughly?
Maybe...
Yeah, well, it's good if we're...
Yeah, because I think that would be...
And I'd make a subtle distinction, we being the waste book department is another major customer, which is another kind of component of that, so I'd take residential and commercial in themselves because they are slightly different things, can you see? Yeah.
So I'll withhold my view as to the best way to go. My fifty percent school set physics doesn't well equip me to understand the relationship between mass and volume very well, but we'll see what happens.
For my part, I would support this motion. I think that the discussion we've had shows that this is a very complex area with a lot of variables and a lot of influences and I thank staff for the explanations they've given on the hoof, but I think this report, that this motion references, will enable us to consider some of the reservations that councillors have expressed round the table and give us the opportunity to make a perhaps a more informed decision, albeit that we've been given some extremely good information already today. Are there any further speakers? Councillor...
We've got fees and charges on page five nineteen, so I assume that they essentially lie on the table until we receive this report to IS, which will then confirm the fourteen fifteen fees and charges, is that...
Well, my understanding is that the status quo would prevail until we make any other decision.
And just on that though, there would need to be a decision made at the eleventh of February, infrastructure services, in order to get fees of consultation into the draft plan.
The fees that are in front of us are different to the current fees as of today.
Yep. Councillor Benson-Pope, do you want to exercise your reply?
Very briefly, Mr Chairman, cats, dogs and landfill charges. So I'm just wanting to remind people this is a debate about whether we have a debate. And in terms of volume versus weight, well, we're not actually charging by volume at the moment, we're charging by imaginary volume because you're now paying for what the average cost is, even for a near-empty trailer, because the...
Because the discretion is limited and that's what's led to the issue. I don't know what the perfect regime is for doing this, but it seems to me that it's a lot more transparent for people to pay by weight for whatever type of waste they have in their vehicle, according to whatever regime that might subsequently be put in place. And actually, I've got no issue and I hope the report does include the potential for minimal or no charging for compostable green waste, for example. I think people should be encouraged to provide that resource to the city, or for nothing, or to be able to do so at a very low cost, with a view to the general sort of clean-up and the attractiveness of the city. So that can all be part of this. And that's all, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to put it. All those in favour, please say aye. Against?
Can we have a show of hand?
All those in favour, please raise their hand. It's carried. It was carried. Thank you for that and thank you, councillor White.
Can I just ask before the 11th, if there's a potential for some of the councillors to actually come and visit the landfill and actually understand the law a little better? I've understood most of what's going on, but having not been for the landfill for many years and trying to get my head around all the issues, and I think it would be great for me and maybe some of the other newer councillors especially to come and see what's going on.
What are you doing at lunchtime today?
You can take my trailer and load any time, if you offer to play.
We will organise a time, that is a good idea.
Just remember, if you take your own car, you'll be charged.
But just to be clear, there's no by weight to charge you.
Right, councillors, now we move on to section 10 of the, this is corporate departments. In the plan, and the first report up is the draft annual plan consultation plan, which is the pages 12.99 to 12.104 in the large folder. Yes, I've just been reminded that actually there's some lines of budget to go, but we'll do this first and then we will come back to those. I was looking at the wrong part of my agenda. Welcome, Jane. Right, that's the report on page 12.99. Are there any questions, councillors, of that report? Or of the write-up of that report? Move, councillor Noon, second, councillor Wilson. Any questions? Councillor Hawke.
I just have a question as to what, if any, digital or online consultation options. It says we've got print media, static displays, roadshows and public meetings. Is that all that's planned?
Yes, the summary will be available online. The actual CAM document will be available online. In the past, we've used Facebook to just chat about some issues and we will be looking at doing that again. And the online submission form will have some questionnaire elements in it this year, because some of the decisions that council has made present some options to ask questions of the public.
Any further questions? Councillor McTach.
Would the new CFO be open to having an open budget, that people can make their own infographics out of? The former CFO wasn't. It might just be something to think about.
Talk to us what you mean, Jane.
It just means providing budgetary data in Excel format, rather than in closed formats, which enable people to pick it up easily and put it into a model and output in their own infographics.
Yep, we'll explore that, assuming that's all that, anything that helps with transparency. It's complex stuff, make it easy to understand.
Any further questions? Right, councillor Thompson.
Jane, would you just give us an idea whether public meetings are good when you're playing?
It depends on what the issues are. And you get good attendances in areas where there is an issue. Over the past few years, Portobello meeting has been very successful, mainly because of the level of interest in the Portobello, Karen and Boyd project. And last year particularly, there was a consultation going on at the same time through Land Transport Ops area. So we picked it back on. There is some district plan consultation going on at the same time, annual plan consultation this year. And I'm looking at opportunities around piggybacking on any of those events. In terms of public meetings, having a captive audience and covering off two areas. It's not always a good mix, but it's quite variable. I mean, sometimes we hold a public meeting and we get four or five people, other times we get, you know, 90 people.
Councillor Thompson.
As one of the unfortunate people who stood at Pack and Save on an extremely cold day, I just wondered whether there's a lot better use of our time. And that is, we tend to think of our public meetings as place or location-based meetings. Why can't we identify them more as issues-based meetings? So for example, we know from coverage in the newspaper, from the coverage in the online columns, where the significant issues are. And if you had a public meeting that was focused, if you had a number of public meetings that was focused around those issues, you would get people turning up to them. An obvious one is cycle waste. And another, you know, I say another obvious one, might be the future structure around whatever we do with statehood. Bad to not get that one. But that to me would be far better, even more useful. And it can take me dipping out amongst councillors' particular interests and those areas might choose to come to those ones or whatever. So for me, that would be something I would find valuable. And I know I'm going to get involved and I know I'll get feedback from both sides of the issue.
Yeah, I think if you take into time, I think this year we've got a couple of issues that, that aspect here.
Councillor Wilson.
Well, my issue, that picks up my issue. I think there would be definitely an interest in having one in Mossfield this year. But I think it's been missed out and I would love to see one this afternoon even. So that starting the discussion on libraries can actually be done in their, two if not ours.
Through the chair, my feeling was that Pack and Save, I think we may stop doing that. I haven't felt it's been particularly successful in the last couple of years.
Okay, councillor Benson.
Coming back to your comment that the submissions work well in public meetings, whether it's a specific issue, which Harry can point out, Portobello. I, as a councillor, always suspected that a lot of the submissions that we get tended to come from specific issues and small numbers of people. And I was very enamored of the Wanganui idea where they sent out a questionnaire with their rates demand in which major issues were simply asked to be ranked. I think it was then Mayor Laws at the time, they had a major issue of whether or not to build a big art gallery. And so what they did is they put 14 different things that the council could or should be doing in their rates demand and got people to rank them. I'm quite surprised that footpaths came the top of the list and the proposed art gallery came really low down. To me, if we could get that kind of feedback from the public and I think sending it out with a rates demand would be a good way of doing it and would make people look even more closely at their rates demand as well, make them realise what they were paying for. But in our, I mean, it's worked in Wanganui. Do you think it's feasible for us to do that here? Or do you think that there are some difficulties involved with that kind of, different sort of?
We've had a look at that. The issue we have is the timing of the rates demands, because they go out in, was it three countries? And in terms of fitting it in within a consultation period, it doesn't quite match. But I'd be open to trying something through the rates demand. Our experience was with the little pamphlet that we used to put into the rates demand, that it did tend to often just, don't believe we heard it, just went in the recycling without people looking at it. So we'd need a bit of advertising around it to draw people's attention to, in fact, they needed to do something with it.
Right. Were you aware that in Wanganui, the rate of response to this feedback question was actually greater than the voting response at the election? So in Wanganui, they were able to actually get very, very wide responses to the questionnaire.
No, I wasn't aware of that. I'll look into the results of that.
Councillor Hawke.
Firstly, I guess just a note of caution on that suggestion, a reminder that not all ratepayers receive a rates demand and those citizens who do have an interest would be missed out in that consultation process and I think that would be a shame. But I'm inclined to support councillor Thompson's suggestion around issues-based before and again, forward the addition of that he and councillor Calvert showed as chair, deputy chair of the finance committee in that line. And I wonder whether a similar format could be used where people had the opportunity to send in any queries that they had in the name of efficacy of answering people's concerns. And if the meetings were issues-based, people could go knowing that the best, well, people had the best opportunity to get them answered, I guess, by whether it's elected members or staff or.
Yeah, I know that works very well with a finance meeting. The timeframes around this are quite short, so it wouldn't be a great deal of opportunities. They'd have to get a clip off the mark, the questions on, once we announce the timetable.
Councillor Calvert.
Sort of following on between councillor Vennis and councillor Hawkins, the chunk of Dunedin citizens who are ratepayers through their rent, as opposed to ratepayers directly, probably need to be picked up in a different way. And it would be even interesting to know whether their responses would be different in a ranking one to 14 sort of sense. But I would be interested in seeing if we could pick out, because we sort of know a wee bit, like we know on the North End that there's a lot of tenanted properties. In some places, we could send something out to people saying, "In your rent, you will be paying rates. Do you want to rank these and be part of this?" Or having meetings in that area or, because I think it's really important to make sure we pick up in some ways, the people who are most affected by us spending a lot of money, who most care about that money or have the least money to spare, often can be people who are in rental accommodation or a subsection of.
Right, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any further questions? And I've got it up for discussion. So the motion is that the proposed approach to consultation be approved. Is there any discussion? Councillor McTach.
Well, I just wonder, on the basis of the discussion that we've had around the table, whether the mover and seconder would be open to the idea of including at the end of that motion with staff to give consideration to issues-based meetings and data made available in open format, or budget data made available in open format. It gives, yeah, it gives staff room.
Councillor Noon, you're okay with it? Councillor Wilson, you're okay with that addition? That's fine. Okay, is there any further discussion? Councillor Benson.
Regarding the submissions process, looking for instance at the development contributions, virtually all the submissions we got were from developers. And the initial development contributions, ideas that we had, ended up being virtually completely annihilated by this welter of submissions, which I felt really didn't represent the people of Dunedin or their interests at all. They were a particular group and a well-funded one in this case. Now, I don't pretend that any kind of consultation that we do is ever going to be across the board representative. It only gives us a snapshot of something. But I would very much like it if, as a councillor, we had a bit wider kind of feedback than essentially the submission process that we have currently. And to that end, I mean, the submission process is fine and there is a kind of feedback that does come back. But I have to admit that as a councillor, I take that submission process often with quite a grain of salt. Because the people I talk with, and one of the ways I do it is to go around the smoke o rooms in South Dunedin and just talk to people in their lunch hours or in morning or after their tea. You get a completely different kind of feedback on a particular issue doing that than you do looking at the kind of feedback that you get from someone who is prepared to put pen to paper in a submission form and then bring it to council. That is invariably going to be a very unrepresentative minority of people consulted here. So I've got no issue with the recommendation other than that if it's possible for us to have a wider reach and just reaching the ratepayers would do it for me. You would recognise that it was only ratepayers and not people in rental accommodation, as councillor Calvert has pointed out. That would give me a much better idea of where most people's priorities lay. Because I think that our priorities and our perception of the people's priorities does tend to get very much skewed by a submission process or a consultation process, which is very selective in its nature. So yeah, just if it's possible for staff to perhaps consider some other wider feedback solution. The Wanganui example is just one possibility. I'd very much appreciate that.
That has been added to the motion. Any further speakers? Councillor Noon, you want to add?
Just briefly, public consultation for local government organisations such as a council is a challenge and there's probably no easy, hard and fast rule to achieve good connection with your community. But I accept the comments that have been made, you know, for us to think of alternatives is a good idea. Somehow we've got to merge ourselves into our society when people are out and about if we want to connect. And I hear that, you know, what councillor Vennis is doing is great. And I know in the White White Coast Charters, the Blue Skin Bay AMP show has been, over the years, reasonably successful in terms of being able to connect with our community. And people, simply because they're out and about doing something that they are enjoying with their family, take the opportunity perhaps to have a word to a community board member and, you know, have it, whether it's a grizzle or maybe the old type of compliment. But so yeah, it is a challenge and we're open to suggestions to help improve that process.
Okay, I'm going to put the motions on the wall. I'm going to put it. All those in favour, please say aye. Against? Carried. It's budget lines and then head back to those reports. So the first budget line is administrative, administration services. And this is page 10.3 in the large folder. And I'll just work through, so just raise, as we did last week, just raise any issues as we go through those. So that's 10.3, administration services. The next one is city flick, page 10.7. Councillor Noon.
I did have a key in here, but it was the renewals under new capital. And we've got a line, two items in there, vehicle flick replacement, truck vehicle replacement. And I just wondered why it is necessary to spend that amount of money on renewals? Or does it fairly deflect, you know, the flick that we have requires so much replacement on an annual basis? Clearly that's what that's indicating. I just want to understand if it. I just want to understand a little bit of this.
Yep, through the chair. In the past, it used to be up to five hundred thousand for vehicle fleet replacement. In fact, every third year was six hundred thousand. So there is a marked reduction. This has occurred over the last few years. So that accurately reflects the vehicles that need to be replaced. And that's based on usage, the type of job they're doing, their mileage, their maintenance costs. And really, it's all of their, all their costs.
And the approximate, through the chair, does the approximate number of vehicles we're talking roughly?
It's about seventeen capable vehicles and sixty four others. So you're talking around eighty odd. There is what's going on at the moment with the water waste vehicles. There's approximately twenty five that won't be no longer on the fleet. And also rural fire vehicles, they've been transferred to the rural fire authority council. So we're talking about approximately eighty. There's other things, there's motorbikes, there's trailers, there's agro vehicles down at the tent cans. There's quite a range of vehicles.
So it's currently eighty and it's going to reduce by about thirty?
No, at the end of the day, it'd be around the eighty mark.
Oh, I guess.
Yeah, because there's another twenty five on top of that, another seven vehicles at rural fire.
So just to clarify that, you anticipate that it'll be, over the next year or so, it'll drop off further?
Through the chair, that the number of vehicles will drop off, yes.
Councillor Hawkins.
Yeah, of that, of that other vehicles category, are any of those cycles electric or otherwise?
There is one electric bike that we have and we have another couple of push bikes. I think it's nine motorbikes for parking enforcement. Was that, sorry, was that your question?
And that's, and you're comfortable that one electric bike is adequate?
Through the chair, we're looking to see what the usage is of the bike. It has got quite good usage and I could see that we will look at increasing the number of electric bikes if the usage was there.
Thanks. Councillor Thompson.
I was slightly puzzled on the cash flow out to general rates, given it's almost entirely internally funded operation. Just slightly odd roundabout, I just wondered why that was.
Through the chair, Carolyn, with the, assist, see for assistance with this area?
Through the mayor, there is a general rate contribution in this activity. And what we're doing at the moment is that we've had a review of the internal charging of the activity and we'll be looking at doing away with that altogether. So basically, the charges are just too high at the moment. And in a roundabout way, that's how we're, you know, getting it back or giving that overcharging back to the organisation. So we would be seeing that that line would disappear and the charges in the individual budgets will be less. So we hope to be that we've completed for the final plan.
Any further questions? Okay, we'll move on to corporate leadership, page ten point one one. Customer services agency, page ten point one five. Councillor Wilson.
Look, it's just a very small question, but a small amount, it's thirty thousand. But I don't understand how the general rate, and I appreciate there should be a general rate charge for this department, falls off in fifteen, sixteen onwards. And it's only a small amount and maybe it's a email later, but if we were thirty thousand out on each year, on each budget, it would be. So on the first line, it drops off? I'm afraid I was anticipating that there might only be questions about the upgrade to the plaza reception counter, so I've got to have to find that from the analysts. Don't worry, I'll just do it by email. Oh, sorry, I didn't hear the question. Sorry, on the first line, it's got general rates.
Yes.
This year and next financial year have got a general rate contribution in there after only zero point nine. It's a thirty thousand reduction. It just seems unusual, that sort of reduction.
Yes, so I think that's a one off for the capital expenditure in that year.
It is, okay, that is, yes, so it's not an ongoing requirement. They've just got a one off plaza reception upgrade. But an underlying, it is, so customer services, and I appreciate you've been doing all your internal charges separately, differently, but so there's none of that is, it's all distributed to different council departments, even though there could be a general, yeah, there's no rates contribution for that really at all.
No, no, I mean, we do, it is nice to have a bit of a balance here because if nothing else, it provides a bit of flexibility if we had to change those places later on, it'd rattle down. But most of them, the majority is charged to individual departments and then there might be a little bit of general rate funding there.
Councillor Benson.
I'm wondering, Mr. Mayor, if the manager might tell us the reasons for the plaza counter upgrade?
Yes, it's an efficiency improvement. At the moment, we've got a payments desk and a general inquiries desk and you have two staff on each and the intention is to bring those together so that we can rationalise the number of staff and it will only require three, three staff. So it's, yeah, it's bringing those two separate functions together.
But please note that it's not accompanied by a reduction in staff. So we have increased number of calls and we are getting longer call waiting times. So it actually, at first point is about trying to resource the call centre better for that increased volume of what it is that we're asking them to do in terms of providing a better customer service.
Councillor Banis.
It's not a question, but I'd like to just take the opportunity to congratulate the call centre staff on A, being pleasant and B, informative on a whole range of issues. When you called the DCC when I first started as a councillor, you would often get bounced around three different people before you actually got an answer and then it wasn't one you wanted. These days, I find that you can very, very quickly just call the frontline staff and they seem to know just about everything, whether it's a complaint about noise, whether it's a complaint about the tip or whatever. I've been very impressed with how quickly they're able to respond. So I'm okay with that department, thank you.
Thank you.